This evening's council meeting in a virtual setting. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. Chamber is currently closed to the public. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live this evening on Spectrum Channel 322, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, or El Segundo TV at YouTube dot com, or they can access via Zoom from an electronic device of choice. And the meeting information for joining is outlined on tonight's agenda, which you can find on ElSegundo.org. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking and council members, when making a motion or a second auto motion, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. All right, and we're going to start this evening's meeting with the invocation tonight. We're fortunate to have Pastor Wes Harding of The Bridge with us again. He'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Councilmember Purstuck leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pastor Wes, the invocation, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Councilmembers and City Administration. Thank you for allowing prayer to go before we conduct business. I really know that it matters here and it matters in our community, so thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here tonight for our City Council meeting. Please remind us of where we are and help us plan to where you want us to be. When we talk about issues facing this great community of El Segundo, please remind us that we may not always agree on everything and that we may not have to agree in order to move forward. Allow us to listen twice before we speak and trust that the opposing view has the same desire to better our community as I do. Dear Heavenly Father, give us the ability to listen well and then communicate our opinions with integrity and clarity. This is our community and these are our opportunities to share our hope for its betterment. And Heavenly Father, thank you for the hardworking people of this community. Thank you for the elected officials, the administration, the city workers, the city first responders, as well as the men and women of the police and fire departments. We know that they love this community as much as the other and strive to go above and beyond caring for people, building streets and infrastructure. We have amazing people doing amazing work. Thank you so much for them and their families. We are a better community because of them. Heavenly Father, this is our home and we are grateful to live here. Be with us tonight as we conduct our business and edify our neighbor. Amen.
I'd please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Harding and thank you Councilmember Purstuck. Much appreciated. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. I'm back, sorry. Councilmember Drew.
Here.
Councilmember Nicole.
Here.
Councilmember Purstuck.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
And Mayor Boils.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Public Communications, now is the time and place. Those wishing to speak via Zoom, please click the hand icon and the host will announce your name when it's your turn to speak. If you're dialing in from a phone, you'll need to press star nine to raise the icon hand and then star six to unmute. We'll give that a minute or two.
Okay, I'm moving over Shade McFadden.
No audio.
Okay, hold on.
Nothing yet, Shad. And Mona.
All right, hold on.
He's got a paper. It says, okay, but your handwriting is as bad as your audio quality, Shad. I can't read that. Did anyone read that? What did it say?
I think it says I'll come back.
Okay, okay, cool.
We have to put him back in attendee and just do his audio. Tracy, I've already tried that, so hold on. There's another, I have one here that I'm moving over, but they're by number, so I don't have a name. It's a three, one, zero. Well, I'm going to move this person over to speak.
Okay, hopefully Shad will come back.
So there's a person, yes.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, good evening, Mayor Boils and the City Councilmembers. This is Scott Houston, resident of El Segundo and also your representative on the West Basin Municipal Water District. So first of all, I hope you're all doing well and are staying safe during this time. And of course, we're all having our fun with these Zoom calls. So thank you for your patience in being with us. I actually wanted to just call and comment regarding item D12 on the agenda tonight about the Aviation Boulevard Bike Way Greenway Project update. And I understand that this is in the beginning stages, but I did want to express my support as a resident of the city that you guys are exploring options on this project. This, this project really has been very grassroots driven and it was first brought to my attention by our residents, both in El Segundo and over in our neighbors' area of Bel Air. And I think it's really nice to have folks who are expressing what they want rather than just what they are against. I think obviously we can all appreciate that. So during this pandemic, probably like a lot of you all, I've been doing a lot of bicycling, a lot of walking and hiking, hitting different trails and things. And through that, I've realized better than before some of the benefits we have in our area, but also some of our shortcomings. And I do think that a pathway along aviation that connects the South Bay would be a great addition to our community. And also, the residents have expressed interest in the environmental aspects of this project, including the potential use of recycled water that I believe could be integrated into it. So I think that would be something we would all want to explore. And this is, again, it's a regional benefit to our area. We've got the public transportation development happening. We've got the airport transportation development happening and commercial real estate that's really, you know, developed incredibly well over on the east side of El Segundo. So I think this is a great opportunity for our city. It helps our residents, our employees are interested and supportive and they're really pushing all of us to look at these types of projects as we reimagine our public spaces. So, you know, I just want to let you know, I really support studying it, get the information, look at our options, and then the regional partners can engage and make some potential decisions. So again, Council, I'm really excited that you guys are considering this. You know, I definitely encourage it and I express my personal support and I look forward to being a partner however I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Houston. Are we going to, Tracy and Mona, were we able to get Shad? It looks like Shad might be coming.
So Chad is back. Still can't hear him.
You know, is it possible to get Shad the audio phone line to call in from his cellphone?
Sure.
I can read public communication while Mona and Shad.
That's great. Yeah, let's see that, please.
I'm figuring it out. All right. Um, we have three letters this evening. First one, I wanted to weigh in on Agenda Item 12 because I think it's critical to rid the aviation corridor of its current blighted appearance. Right now, the aviation border doesn't represent the gem of a city that El Segundo, that is El Segundo. As the eastern gateways into El Segundo and beach communities, the beautification project could turn it into an attractive front door instead of promoting access to the city and its businesses. It could even encourage more businesses to make El Segundo their home due to increased foot traffic. How about using the bridge to declare welcome to El Segundo, turning it into an iconic? Use it to promote biking and walking, a healthy lifestyle and a fun place to live and visit. Turning Aviation Boulevard into a greenway provides safer access to the schools and shops. Eventually, the project could link El Segundo to the point and LAX fostering increased tourism. Thank you for considering my comments, Eileen Becker Salmas. Mayor and Council, the South Bay Bicycling Coalition encourages you to support the Aviation Boulevard Bike Way Greenway Project. Project benefits: Enhance multimodal first-last-mile transportation to-from Imperial LAX Metro Station. Complete an important section of the South Bay Regional Bicycle Master Plan, providing connectivity to other South Bay cities. Ensure safe passage for students to-from Wiseburn Unified and Da Vinci Schools along Aviation Boulevard and El Segundo Boulevard. Enhance the safety of pedestrians, students, commuters, and bicyclists. Increase accessibility to businesses in El Segundo and across the South Bay. Boost economic investment along the rapidly changing entrance to El Segundo. Attract businesses and increase property values. Increase green space, park space, and a blighted corridor. Reduce greenhouse gases and reliance on automobiles. This is a complete streets and active transportation project and consistent with Caltrans' new philosophy. Various sources of federal, state, and local funding are available. Respectfully, David Cendias. Mayor Boils, City Council and staff, the South Bay Bicycle Coalition asks that you support the Aviation Boulevard Walking Path Bike Way and Greenway Project. This walk, this walk bike project will benefit multi-cities, including the Imperial Highway Metro Station as well as the city of El Segundo in many ways. It will provide safe, accessible, interconnected regional walking path and bikeways. This will increase the number of children, families, and commuters participating in active transportation and increase the health and wellness benefits of outdoor physical activity, a valuable tool to combat obesity and diabetes. By providing a walk-bike network to schools, local businesses, public services, and recreation venues adds a much-needed zero emission and a low-cost transportation option. It will help reduce motor vehicle traffic on local streets and the associated pollution by replacing car trips with walking-biking trips. Other cities have implemented these types of complete streets, walk-bike. Projects have enjoyed the additional benefits of increases in real estate values, sales in local retail, and dining establishments, and increased tourism, a multimillion-dollar industry. Thank you, Jim Hannan, President, South Bay Bicycle Coalition, Coalition, excuse me. And also, Council, you've received a letter and that was included in this email and I believe you are all copied and it will be posted to our website as a form of communication as well. And that's all I have.
Great, okay. Shad, are you back with audio? No, shoot. Yeah, you want to be like one of those videos where you just hold up the card, you know? Mona, can we do, what do you suggest here? We're having some difficulty.
So Chad, you tried, it looks like you tried dialing into the six-six-nine number, correct? Okay, well, let me look at a couple of other things and I did move in a Jacob that wishes to speak.
Okay, great.
I think Jacob's, uh.
You're muted.
Muted, and I think I'm okay.
Okay, hey guys, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Jacob Barverigas. I'm with the South Bay Park Land Conservancy and I just wanted to speak in support of the Aviation Greenway Project, but also speaking from a perspective of connectivity, of wildlife connectivity and the landscaping and the native landscaping that would be included in this project would be very important for our regional goals for establishing habitat connectivity as well through these trail corridors. And the Aviation Greenway would be a central spine, if you would, to this network that would connect seven of our cities in the South Bay into a network. And so we would strongly support the implementation of this project and also other trail connectivity projects like it.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
All right, thanks.
Okay, should we take three with Shad?
Sure. Hold on, I'm going to try and promote him again. It doesn't seem to give me any other options. Chad? I'm going to record.
Oh, connecting to audio, hold on. When I say connecting to audio, there's a chance. You just call someone's phone and have them hold it up to their speaker?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, look at that. I, I, I don't know if I'm going to be worth all this trouble, but I made it here, that's half the battle. Thanks for the patience and thanks for whoever was bringing me in and out as multiple different roles. All right, so yeah, just, so real quick, I'll try and keep this short. I just wanted to speak on behalf of, you know, we had an incident recently here in El Segundo where there was, you know, a sixteen-year-old girl who, you know, unfortunately, there was a racial slur of hurling her, she was walking through our streets. And this ended up on Facebook pages and that's sort of how I got pulled in at some point, you know. We had a lot of really good community feedback on these pages. I just want to make a, you know, a quick statement on my take just because now that the DEI Committee has informed, you know, a lot of people will reach out, phone, text, tag me and stuff, email me directly. And just wanted to sort of, you know, speak about this incident a little bit. One thing that I noticed is that her mother, Indu, who posted about it on Facebook, there is a long, long list of comments and it was on both sides. And I don't mean there is anyone in support of hurling racial slurs, but the two sides that seemed to emerge is one group seriously put forward the fact that they just could not believe that that would happen here. And there's another side of that, you know, the difference of opinion where they were like, it actually happens all the time. And so, you know, I think for most of us, it's not never and it's not all the time. But I think that, you know, there is, I think it's very clear that both sides are represented in our town here in El Segundo. And so, like I said, as this sort of grew and started to become more conversations, you know, outside of Facebook, there are a couple of members of the DEI, you know, Avery and Christabella, who were able to have a quick chat with Indu, the mother of the girl who, who, you know, posted about it. I do not know her, but by all accounts, she's a very kind, lovely woman, you know, someone we're really excited to have in this community. And, you know, she unfortunately has to have some tough conversations with her daughter and, you know, potentially other people based on, you know, the Facebook post, et cetera. And the other thing that was really sad is that we found out this was not the first time her family has had things yelled at them. So, you know, I think that the forming of the DEI Committee, and again, I'm not here representing a DEI Committee stance. We are having a meeting next week. I'm sure it will be discussed, but we thought it was kind of important to at least, you know, with, with the request for people to take notice and like, now you guys exist, what now? You know, I wanted to just come and make my own personal statement about this. There's a real desire for us to start the work and just want to let you guys know on Council and just anyone who's watching. You know, the work is getting underway. We have subcommittees, you know, we're set up, we're starting to do the work and we want to really keep the focus of this work on this community. It's really the right place for this focus to be. So one thing that this sort of brought to light is we need a way to get this information directly from the residents. The good, the bad, the ugly, all sides of the equation. And so we're working on that. We hope to bring that, you know, sooner than later, how you guys can reach out directly to us so we can get some of this feedback. It also was a chance to look inside and see, you know, with this family who's, you know, this Indian family. It's sort of thinking, you know, we talked with some of the other committees and, you know, culturally, I don't know how many Indian residents we have, but one of my really good friends from work at AT&amp;T is actually, her family is here as well. And so I reached out to her and she had talked about maybe five or six years ago in Rec Park, we did something, whether it was Diwali or Holley or one of the, one of the events, and she's actually talked in our schools to the kids several times, like, hey, bring someone in who can talk through some of these things. So just wanted to sort of come in to sort of say, we really feel strongly, you know, this behavior does exist, you know, as we see it. This is not, you know, damning information that El Segundo is a lost cause. We're also not without some of these racial strike kind of problems. But I do think that we're going to continue to look at all the residents. We want everyone to feel like they can come forward to the committee, tell us how, how things are really going because that's really how we're going to be able to focus. We have four large areas. We're digging into those. But the community involvement is really, really important here. And, you know, I really think that the help of the Council, the help of the community, you know, we can just continue El Segundo making us stronger and more united as opposed to driving us apart, even if it's two slightly different sides of an equation. You know what I mean? I think it's just important to hear all the voices and, you know, keep the conversation going. So just wanted to show up, you know, let people know it's not falling on deaf ears. You know, we hear you and we're very interested in understanding sort of what goes into some of these events and just be present and, you know, see what we can put forward, you know, in the future of how we can sort of address some of these things.
Thanks, Shad. Had the pleasure of coaching that young lady at least two or three times in soccer and they're an incredible family, great assets in the community. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Mona.
Yeah, next we have Jessica Doherty.
Right, okay.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Excellent, all right. I just want to give public comment in support of the Regional Park Place Transportation Project and Aviation Boulevard Project. I know that you are trying to do a study coming up here now and looking into EFIDs. I just want to outline just a few things from my perspective of funding that's available for park projects and for transit projects currently. So my day job is I'm a policy analyst and run a consulting firm. So I work for the City of LA County, a bunch of different folks at different times on different projects. And so looking into what potential funding sources could help, you know, the city of El Segundo develop these projects and make sure that you're building up the economy, supporting the local businesses, but also increasing multimodal accessibility throughout the region. There's currently three big funding options. I just want to flag as well. One is the Parks and Rec Department of LA County has Measure A grant funding, which is specifically to green regions, but also to increase multimodal transportation. And this is all the projects you're talking about in El Segundo meet that criterion. There's also the Federal Active Transportation Grant Funding, which comes around every two years. The last round happened this past summer, so two years from now that will come back around and regions can get up to $20 million. There is also the Metro Active Transportation Funding through Measure M, which the county provides first-last-mile projects since the aviation corridor, for example, and the Park Place Study. All of those can be considered connected to first-last mile to the Imperial Station or other metro stations, which is another funding option for the city. And I can go on and on, but there's also a lot of examples of braided funding opportunities where the Department of Public Works, County, Metro, and other entities can come in and help with oversight and continued funding for maintenance of those regions. So just want to, you know, put a, put a please do this. We're really excited that you're going to study it. But, you know, I'm a resource if there's ever a desire to, to look into additional funding too to support because I would love to see our region improve with these beautification and transportation projects.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Thank you for your continued leadership on this topic. Appreciate it. Okay, Mona, anyone else in public comment?
Yes, we have Matthew Riley.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to make public comment on behalf of Jessica's and the Greenway Project. So I'd like to say, hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Matthew Riley. I'm a high school student that attends the local Da Vinci High School. And I want, and I first wanted to share out and make comment on is, is that when I occasionally walk to school, in which I have to commute on a very thin sidewalk where I can almost feel the cars bustling beside me at fast rates of forty miles per hour, I believe these transportations will provide high school students like me with safe routes to school in addition to safely commuting to the businesses El Segundo has to offer. And I would also like to add, secondly, with LA Metro's ongoing LAX Crunch Line Project and the current Metro Imperial and the current metro Imperial Station, providing a safe route to access these stations for pedestrians and cyclists is a must as traffic from or to these stations, whether it be like traveling to the airport or El Segundo, will inevitably increase when Metro completes their LAX the Crenshaw Line. Yet neither Imperial nor Aviation Boulevard, the streets that lead to Imperial, to the Imperial Metro Station, provide adequate designated bike lanes to reach the stations. I believe if adequate access is provided to these stations, we could see an increase in public transport use and increasing access to all the city of El Segundo has to offer. And finally, as a student, I would love to help the city continue this feasibility study and even possibly doing a joint project with students from El Segundo High School as this project is a great opportunity to better our communities and get involvement in real world projects or government. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, um, we have an Aiden Sessor, Sessor?
Yes, hi, I'm Aiden Sessa. I'm also from Da Vinci and a a high school senior. And I just also want to say to continue this and pledge the support for the Greenway project. You know, the regional park place transportation project in the Aviation Greenway will boost the local economy by increasing business attraction to into the area. The project will also increase property and mental values as people value value bikeability, public transit access and greenery. In fact, this stretch along aviation is identified as a priority in the South Bay Regional Bike Plan, the LA County Regional Bike Plan. However, they have not yet have any bike lanes along this corridor. These will, these projects will enhance safety for pedestrians, students and cyclists. Finally, these projects will add beautification and greenery to El Segundo. So and as a student, I'd love the city to continue this feasibility study by partnering with my peers at El Segundo High School and really, really try to support this project for the safety.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. That concludes public communications. Next up, we have special presentation. And we've got a proclamation, March is American Red Cross Month. And I see Dale there. I'm going to read it, Dale, if that's okay, and then I'll turn it over.
Thank you.
Excellent. Proclamation reads, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in El Segundo across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's one hundred and forty year mission, preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas during the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to the year's record breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas here in El Segundo, families have relied on disaster response volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with home fire and other disasters. The American Red Cross serving Greater Long Beach, South Bay, Metro and Southeast Los Angeles volunteers have supported local families in other ways too, including supplying local hospitals with blood and convalescent plasma as a treatment for COVID nineteen. This life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. Nearly two hundred years since the birth of American Red Cross founder Clara Burton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy. And we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now therefore, on the second day of March, twenty twenty one, the mayor and members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the month of March as American Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens to support the American Red Cross Los Angeles region and its noble humanitarian mission. So Dale, I would hand this to you normally. I'm gonna do it virtually. We'll get this to you if you'd like to say a few words, please.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Bowles, council members, city staff and and residents of El Segundo for this honor. I'm Dale Spiegel. I'm a director with the local Red Cross chapter, whose name is too long to repeat. I am very honored to be following such a fine invocation of the the city goals and needs. See, March is Red Cross Month program dates back to Franklin Delano Roosevelt in nineteen forty three. And it's a time each year that we try and have the community think about its emergency needs and what can be done to alleviate human suffering both locally and in the greater area. I joined the Red Cross several years ago after retirement, opportunity to give back. I've come to realize that I should not have waited so long to get involved. The opportunities are almost endless to help the community at whatever level you are. And and I'm very pleased to see the activity of the the high school students that met that were on the phone earlier. We have a number of Red Cross high school chapters and some of our best work comes from volunteers from the younger area. Why the Red Cross? It's a fantastic program to leverage volunteers, professionals and owners to achieve sweeping service goals. Each year, on average, the American Red Cross responds, and this is nationally, but to sixty thousand, sixty thousand disasters. Provides training to four point eight million people, collects more than four point six million blood donations. And in recent years, if you've not been involved in the blood donation program, it's not just giving whole blood anymore, but there's a variety of different waste plats and and others that meet the needs as our science has developed. We serve service members, veterans and their families through communication and other items during time of stress. And we also support serving two hundred and thirty million people annually in disasters around the globe. We can always use more volunteers and blood and donations. Everyone is welcome. Please visit redcross.org/LA. And, you know, we'd love to have you aboard. And it it is so valuable to have this form of recognition from the city council to help in our efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Appreciate your time. All right, next up, we have a presentation from Chief Donovan on COVID nineteen.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. I'll be sharing my screen here with a quick presentation. And as I do that, just to highlight, I'll be going over the health metrics that are shown as of today, and these are going to be favorable health metrics as we discuss what COVID nineteen is doing in our community, in our region. An update on the health order related to health, excuse me, to youth sports, a vaccination update and the great progress that's taking place in vaccinating our community and county. And then a quick slide on our cost recovery efforts as we're seeing good headway in our cost recovery. So if we'll begin quickly with our updated health metrics, this is as of today. You could see that the number of cases in the United States and the number of deaths in the United States continue to increase. And although that this is sad news, the rate at which they're increasing is drastically reduced. And I'll I'll speak more to this as it relates to the local efforts that are taking place. In California, we have surpassed fifty two thousand deaths in a little, a little short of three point five million cases of COVID. Excuse me, that's California. And then Los Angeles County, twenty one thousand five hundred and fifty four deaths and nearly one point two million cases. The hospitalization rate is declining, which is great news. And the ICU capacity is also declining, which is great news. Here in El Segundo, we had two more cases of COVID nineteen, taking our total to six hundred and forty six with twenty three in the adjusted category. That is that fourteen fourteen day period, which we see people that are infected. As it looks at, as we drill into the the local data, Los Angeles County has seen a dramatic decrease in the number of case rates, now down to seven point two, test positivity at three point five percent. And the test positivity in the lowest health places at five point one. And I'll show you a slide in a moment that shows a remarkable change in these numbers, which is all very good. And El Segundo, our case rate has dropped seventeen points to five point nine, and our test positivity rate is at two point five. If we look at a comparison side by side of of our area from a month ago, February second, ICU capacity was at zero percent. There was no room in the ICU for patients that either had COVID or had other medical emergencies such as heart attacks and strokes. Today, it's at twenty five point three percent. This is an astounding decrease in patients admitted to ICU and a really good trend. If you look at the case rate in LA County, a month ago was thirty eight point seven. Today, it's dropped to seven point three. In El Segundo, it was twenty eight point nine. Today, it's at five point nine. These are remarkable decreases over a one month period, and it's showing a really good trend as we look at reopening our economy. And on that note, this is a a slide that we're familiar with. This is the blueprint for a safer economy, the tiered system. In Los Angeles County, we're still in the widespread purple tier, although our case rates are dropping substantially, as I mentioned. In fact, today, the county of Los Angeles reported the lowest case rate, adjusted case rate for many, many months. And if we continue this trend, it's likely in the next two to three weeks, we could be moving from the widespread to the red or substantial tier. And on that note, we are required to be in the metrics of less than seven new case rates or the adjusted case rate per one hundred thousand for a period of three weeks in total and test positivity of less than eight percent as well as that health quarter index of less than eight percent. And we're certainly heading in that direction. We'll continue to monitor the health metrics moving forward. As we pivot to the health order changes, on Friday, February twenty sixth, the state of California and the county of Los Angeles removed the restrictions for outside activity. And so LA County opened up out to outside youth and adult recreation sports to full practice and two team competition. And they gave a spreadsheet as to the types of sports that would be allowed, depending on the tier of the sport, which is again based off of contact and the risk of transmittability, determine whether the outside sports could be played and whether or not there would require to be an informed consent or regular testing on on those outside activities were deemed to be a little bit more at risk, football, water polo and lacrosse by way of example. But what we have found is that the county of Los Angeles is now allowing competition. They're allowing more outside recreation. They're allowing youth sports to move forward. And and this is all positive and in in my opinion beneficial to our community. We'll continue to watch these health metrics and continue to work with our local sports teams and the like in making sure they have all the necessary information and compliance to continue the the youth activities. Finally, as it relates to vaccines, we all know that we probably heard in the news that the county of Los Angeles moved to phase one B after they inoculated first responders, hospital workers and those sixty five and older. We're moving to phase one B, which is including education and childcare, food and agriculture and other emergency services such as police officers and those first responders that weren't included in phase one A. As a, in preparation for this, the El Segundo Incident Management Team began coordinating efforts several weeks ago with the El Segundo Unified School District and Da Vinci School District. And in those efforts, we were able to, starting yesterday, utilizing buses, much like we do with the Park Vista residents. We bust teachers from both of those school districts to the clinic in in Los Angeles. And they were able to get their vaccination, first vaccination shots. And today, it's been successful, over a hundred teachers from those two school districts over the last two days have taken advantage of this, and we're going to continue this through this week. To me, this is wonderful because as we get the teachers inoculated and after they get their second shots, we will have an opportunity working with the school district to help support reopening education. As we look at some of the vaccination information and the data is very positive, the rollouts of vaccine availability is increasing. In fact, you probably heard on the news that Johnson and Johnson was approved for FDA emergency use authorization, making now three vaccines. And the Johnson and Johnson is a single dose requirement. So we continue to see the vaccinations distributed throughout the United States with over seventy eight million people receiving inoculations. Here in California, nine point three million Californians have been inoculated. In LA County, nearly twenty percent of the population of Los Angeles County has been inoculated and receiving the doses. So this is, this is one of the reasons that we're seeing such a market drop in the case rates and test positivity. And we'll be pushing hard locally to continue to get vaccinations in the arms of teachers and those that are less fortunate. On that note, I know that there were questions in the past from council member Perstic as related to those members that are homebound and can't get out. We are working with the LA County Emergency Medical Services Agency. They're doing a survey right now to determine agencies that would be willing to help assisting in inoculating homebound patients. And we'll stay on that with the hopes of getting vaccines distributed to us through our local clinic, and then we could then distribute to those that are homebound. And we can start marketing and communicating that opportunity. And so we are taking efforts and working hard to make sure we're getting everybody in our community that needs a vaccine, the availability of getting a vaccine. Finally, I'd like to talk about our cost recovery. We have been fortunate in that the federal administration had, did through an executive order, increased reimbursement retroactive to March of twenty twenty to a full one hundred percent reimbursement. We were getting seventy five percent reimbursement. So this has increased our pending balance to just over two point seven million dollars. And in conference calls with FEMA, Randy Collins has been told that FEMA is aware of our reimbursement requests and they're processing that. And one of the, one of the benefits of having that incident management team, besides the great work they do each and every day, by way of an example, the the vaccinations that we're able to provide to Park Vista and now to the teachers is they do a fantastic job of documenting all of our costs and submitting for reimbursement. And so for the documentation process is really paid dividends. And so we'll, we'll continue to work through FEMA for our cost recoveries. And we're also paying close attention to the one point nine trillion dollar Recovery Act that has passed the House of Representatives, because that also includes direct payments to communities of less than fifty thousand. And so El Segundo could potentially be a recipient of another outside of the FEMA, another federal issuance of money that can help with our lost revenues due to COVID. And and with that, I know this was a lot of information. The overall theme here is that we're going in a very good direction. We're starting to see the economy open up. By anecdotally, today, went out and got lunch and it seems like the more people are out taking advantage of outside dining, youth sports is beginning to pick up again, and we're beginning to get that back to new normal that we've been looking and hoping for so long to get. And and with that, I apologize if I ran over on my time, but I am available for any questions that you might have.
I was muted. Sorry. Do you mind closing the presentation, chief, so I can see my colleagues? Thank you. All right, any questions for chief? Yeah, Councilor Drew.
Uh, chief, so on the the health order change for youth sports, I just wanted to make sure I understood something and just to clarify. So for the high risk, high risk sports, football, lacrosse, water polo, it states there has to be weekly testing. I know that's also the same case for the high school sports. The difference being though, that the state is paying the schools for the testing. Is that correct?
I do believe so. I'm wondering if Melissa is here that can hop in and help out as our expert on youth sports. And maybe collectively, we can get the proper answers to you. And if not, I'll do some research and get back to you.
Hi, city council. Good to see all of you. So in terms of testing, it it is the requirement both for high school as well as for club, club sports. But the federal government, it's my understanding, is is currently reimbursing, still reimbursing for testing. And so there is an option for club sports to create a system where they're working with an entity that that helps them do the testing and then bills back to insurance in order, in order to get those tests reimbursed. There's also a program in place from the federal There's also a program in place from the federal government that allows coverage of tests for uninsured. So it would take a little bit of coordination from those, those clubs, teams, but it shouldn't be an out-of-pocket cost for, for the families in order to be able to meet that requirement moving forward. It would take a little bit of coordination. We, I do want to tell you, so we've been in contact with the aquatics teams that use, use the aquatic center. And our understanding as of today, you know, two of the three are waiting for the case to get under the seven. I think we're at seven point two, according to Chief Donovan today. So they're, they're waiting for that, that, those cases to go under in order to bring back scrimmages and competition because of that requirement of testing. But for that third team, we haven't heard what their decision is, but we're happy to talk to them about options for the testing because I think there are some things that could be done to, to move forward if, if that's something that they chose to do. We've talked with some schools that have been testing teachers, you know, since, since September and October. And so they've been through kind of this, this process and even needing that, that quick twenty-four-hour turnaround. There are ways to do it.
Okay, I actually wasn't actually talking about aquatics in the situation. I was actually thinking of youth football programs that are, there's a lot of, you know, inner-city kid programs. There's a lot of programs with a lot of kids. And if there's no way for those groups to get tested and be reimbursed for it, I just think it's going to be a tough road. But I also understand, I'm hoping anyway, and once we get under seven, that kind of go washes away. And then is it also my understanding that this is only for ages thirteen and up that the testing is required?
It's even fourteen and up. So there is, if it's, if your team is fifty percent or less thirteen and under, then, then you're exempt from the testing requirement for the participants. The coaches still need to do that. So that, yes, that's also.
That sound a little strange to anybody but me, that it would just be half. If under the age of fourteen, you're good to go. Once you hit that, your fourteenth birthday, it's a problem? It says, I know you didn't make the order. I'm not asking you to change it. I'm just saying it just seems a little bit strange, but.
Yeah, I believe there's, you know, some studies that show that children are less likely to transmit it. So I'm sure that has, has, you know, been put into their decision.
Let's be honest, science hasn't been used in a very long time. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. McCullough. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Chief? Chief, I want to, I want to take a moment as things are starting to improve, just highlight a couple of things. You've done, this is from the entire council. We've done an incredible job setting up the AHINT. We're the first, I believe, city to do that in the South Bay. We were looked to as a role model within the rest of the South Bay for that. You've been operating that seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. You led the effort to provide free COVID-nineteen tests and vaccinations, including coordinating at Park Vista for residents there. And you played a key role in working with the citywide businesses to get them set up. So thank you for all that. You've been an advocate, working really hard, also a strong champion for the El Segundo City Fire Department. All the men and women that work out of fire stations wanted to, and we on the council, thank you for everything that you've been doing since. It's been, what has it been?
A year.
It's been a year. And time flies when you're.
Dog year, sir.
Yeah, exactly.
I appreciate those words.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else on Chief's presentation? Good. I don't see any. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. All right. Item A is a procedural motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. One of my colleagues like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Jerusso moved.
Thank you. Give a second.
Pimentel, second.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right, you pass five oh.
Thank you. All right. We have a consent calendar. Are there any polls for this evening? Yes, Councilman Drew.
I'd like to poll number six, please.
Okay. Okay, noted.
Ten, please, briefly.
Okay. Okay, any others? All right. Do I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, ten, and eleven?
Jerusso moves.
Great.
Pimentel, second.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right, all approved except for items number six and ten.
Okay, Lance, item six, please.
Yes, so item six is establish salaries for part-time classifications. Recommendations is adopt a resolution to establish the basic monthly salary range for the job classifications of fire marshal, part-time, battalion chief, part-time, and police assistant to, part-time. Oh, there you are, Scott. I just have a question on that. So I understand that, that we have used and are using part-time and temporary positions on an as-needed basis for the city. Can you just please clarify for me or for us why these three positions in particular, all emergency services related, are being brought to us at this time?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to ask our HR director or former HR interim director, Donna Peter, to go ahead and address that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the question. This really is a housekeeping item. You have to establish part-time salaries. It's required to be in compliance with CalPERS. So even though these classifications and salaries exist on a full-time basis, they don't as part-time. So therefore, to be in compliance with CalPERS, we have to bring back, bring a salary resolution establishing these as part-time salaries and not full-time. So these are temporary part-time positions.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. I'm good to proceed.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, do you want to make a motion to approve that one, Lance?
Yes, motion to approve number six on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay.
It says Mayor Drew, so I keep wanting.
That works.
Mayor Drew.
Tell me whatever you want. Okay.
Passes five oh.
Okay. Chris, Mayor Potem, item nine.
I'm pulling item ten, Mr. Mayor, and this is a, one of those laudatory polls. So much of what we have focused on in the preceding two years is to bring clarity and candor to our financial approach to the city. And some of that takes on the stark realities of where our unfunded pension liability would be. Some of it is taking a hard look at assets like golf courses and replacement funds for fire trucks. Some of it is water funds. But all of those things have required a professional and diligent look at how we do reporting. And I wanted to recognize what Joe's team, Joe Lilio, and the finance department's team has done. This is the second time, I believe, the last five years, we've been awarded for and commended for our financial reporting. And so item ten, this citation from a national organization is a testament to the probity of that department and the way they brought it forward, and it is important in the way that our city operates that our residents can look to our public records with absolute trust and transparency of what they are receiving and that they have the same numbers that we do that guide our decisions. So I don't have any further on this. I just wanted to pull ten because I did not think that a significant award like this belonged on a consent calendar, when it's something that really represents a great deal of work by a lot of people and clears up some of the great mysteries of municipal governance that we may have seen in the past. So thank you, Joe, and I will certainly open to the floor if anyone else has comments.
Thanks, Mayor Potem. You said, I concur. Well said. Great job, Joe. I know.
Thank you.
Thumbs up. Yeah. Great job, Joe. Did you get any kind of, I don't know, plaque or anything, or what did, what did you get?
Well, they used to give a plaque annually. Yeah, they only give a little coin.
More about the achievement, anyway. Awesome. Well done.
He may get a, he may get a free lunch from the city manager once we're allowed to go out to lunch together.
There you go.
In the spirit of the way we report financially, there are no free lunches at this city. And I do not expect that our chief finance officer would receive one. In that regard, I will move approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll second it. Thank you. I'll second it. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, class goes five oh.
Okay, before we move on to public hearing, there was another item on there we didn't pull. We've already approved it. We concluded the golf course subcommittee. Just want to say thank you to everybody in that subcommittee. They've done an incredible job guiding us through the last few years. And council's going to figure out a way to thank those people more appropriately than just putting them on a consent calendar. So more to come on that. Thank you. Okay, no, no public hearings, staff presentation. We've got the Regional Park Place Transportation Project and Regional Aviation Boulevard Bike Way Greenway Project update. And Mr. Mitnick will present on this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you got to get sort of a tag team approach tonight. We're excited to have this in front of the city council. So you have from the city, you have myself. I'll do the introductory comments and I'll do the wrap-up. And I also have our public works director and other city staff that'll be available for questions. But the meat of this will be presented by Larry Cosmott of Cosmott Companies. He's our lead consultant on this project. He has his team here tonight as well. And so by way of a little bit of background, council, we've been in front of you a few times over the last couple of years. Actually, probably the last few decades in terms of the Park Place Transportation Project. So the purpose of tonight is to give you an update. And we go to the next slide. What we'll do is, we'll give you an overview of the projects. And then Larry Cosmott will walk through the funding options. We'll share with you the work done to date to identify funding options, what's in front of us, and then where we, we can go with funding options. Then I'll come back and I'll talk about the next steps. And if there's any questions from the council, we'll be happy to respond. So again, treat this as a study session. We're bringing you up to speed. Okay, so we're going to talk to you about two projects. One, and these are both regional projects, and that's really important because they're not just for El Segundo. They're to benefit the broader region, which makes us eligible for significant pots of outside funding. Okay, so the first project is the Park Place Transportation Gap Closure and Grade Separation Project. This is a congestion relief project and connecting with the freeway of four oh five, one oh five, dealing with LAX Transit Access Goods Movement and so on. And Larry will get more into that. And the second project is Aviation Boulevard Bike Way Greenway Project connecting the South Bay to LAX. This is either the first mile or the last mile, depending on your perspective. There is a bikeway system in the South Bay, sort of stops at the El Segundo border. We're trying to figure out how to connect that, the multimodal transit with LAX. Okay, so that is my piece. And if we go to the next slide. Now I'm going to turn over to Larry Cosmott, and he will walk you through a series of slides dealing with funding options. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Can you hear me? Are we good on the volume? Perfect. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and certainly citizens of El Segundo and city staff. As you know, Cosmott's been working with the city staff and yourself for quite a while to at least identify ways that we can fund regional improvements. And the city manager already underscored the importance of regional. We will be talking about an enhanced infrastructure financing district very shortly. That is the vehicle that enables the city, under recent legislation in the past six years, to create a special regional funding district, a tax increment district, that also enables us to go after other funding sources. County sales tax, R and M, which we've already used for initial design funding, that's been awarded. SB one grant money, which in this case would be the Trade Corridor Enhancement Program. Part of these infrastructure improvements include, you know, relocation and redevelopment of, of basically transportation tracks from the railroads, UPRR and Standard Pacific. So we have those particular elements of it. EIFD is, again, the district that we can place these regional improvements in, as we will show you. And these EIFDs and these funding sources also really help structure public-private partnerships in the sense that we can bring private funding and public funding together in a structured sense at the right time and in different sequences to move things along. So that, let's go to the next slide. So the, the reality behind and the reason behind EIFDs is that they are a tool for regional partnerships. And El Segundo, of all cities that I can think of in this LA region, really sits at the nexus and the crossroads of jobs, housing, major infrastructure installations like Lawa, major sporting facilities, significant residential concentration, significant industrial and commercial concentration. And we sit in the middle of that in El Segundo, and the reality is the connectivity of the major roadways, whether it's Nash or Douglas or El Segundo, with the I-five, with rapid transit is really critical to the future of the region. And so that's the basis upon which you can look at these regional improvements. But you also want to look at it from the perspective of what are the benefits to the residents, the businesses, and the city's general fund? How can you structure a, for example, a city-county partnership and at some point, a metro partnership so that you can deliver infrastructure, you can operate it, you can maintain it, and you can basically coordinate the relevance of it and the interaction of all these projects so that the overall area improves, not only for the city but for the region? That's the philosophy. That's the funding mindset of an EIFD. Next slide. So one key project, as you know, one connected project is this east-west connector. It's really kind of a knuckleball, if you will, in, in terms of trying to pull through the new, the loop of access to the one oh five freeway, to the metro C-line, to LAX. It essentially is, it's a, it's a functional set of improvements. It includes about a quarter of a mile of new roadway, continuous four-lane connector between PCH and Douglas. It connects existing segments of Park Place, which you can kind of see here in this map or this aerial where the locate, there's disconnects, there's a series of disconnects. And then there are a series of UPRR and UBSF rail alignments, all of which have to be connected in order to essentially create a flow of regional and local traffic that can move east and west and north and south and take full advantage of the connectivity to the one oh five freeway, to regional transit, to the airport, to the South Bay. That's the critical element of this, I believe. Now, there's another element. There's another project, which is the Aviation Bike Way Greenway Improvement, which is also essential because it's very much a front gateway to the community. And as you've heard some of the earlier testimony, it also connects regional sort of greenway and bikeway and other amenities that become part of an overall network to both the South Bay, to El Segundo, and the overall LA region. Next slide. So at the end of the day, this part, this element that we could, this project that we can potentially fund with an EIFD. And remember, tonight is really a briefing as to how these work, what we could do with them locally, what it would mean regionally. And the importance here is that if we greenlight going forward and the continued evaluation of this, we think we can secure funding. I mean, this is an expensive project. A hundred million dollars is not a small amount of money. Twenty million of land acquisition and remediation, construction, approximately eighty million. These numbers will change as we move forward. I mean, but at, at this point, the placeholder is a hundred, over a hundred-plus million. And the EIR was completed in two thousand and nineteen. We have an addendum currently underway. So it is a real project from that perspective because the pre-development activity is moving forward. We did receive, as you know, over five million dollar Metro Measure R Design Funding Agreement. The RFPs for the improvements in this particular project, the design RFP is due back April twenty-seventh of this year. So this is the time to consider financing options, including grants, and to figure out whether or not the EIFD facilitates all, all of this. And I think it does. I think you'll see that. Next slide. So the other project that I mentioned is the Aviation Boulevard Bike Way Greenway Project. Again, the regional aspect of this is the north-south connectivity through the west side of Aviation Boulevard from Imperial to El Segundo. It is a connected project. It is a regional beautification project. It is a gateway project. It facilitates multi- It facilitates multi-mobile connections between business and transit, all of which are developing on that corridor. The estimated project cost is around ten million and there's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in annual maintenance that we had pegged as a placeholder for now. Again, part of this effort going forward is to achieve design and implementation analysis so that we could use the EIFD and various financing options to accomplish this project, including grants. Next slide. So what is an EIFD? Sometimes I hear it's EFID. It's really EIFD. It's the way it goes. It's a Prop eighteen in prop. In fifty-two, nineteen fifty-two, the state had approved tax increment financing. And we knew that creature of financing as redevelopment agencies. And they get mixed up, they get confused, but the reality is the way these work is tax increment financing is not a new set of taxes. It's a value capture of the, from the development and implementation of projects. I'll explain that in a minute. Enhanced infrastructure financing districts are more of a modern version of redevelopment. They don't come with the same focus that redevelopment did. The focus for EIFDs is about sustainability, mobility, connectivity, transportation, candy, housing. It's pretty broad. I'll show you the reasons or the purposes it can be used for under the statute. So these are, these are basically all encompassing districts using tax increment financing. And what happens is that a portion of the future property tax revenue from new development is dedicated to infrastructure projects. It's that value capture. And you can use investment in infrastructure to support economic growth. You just saw in the last two, three slides, connectivity projects, projects that really facilitate the movement of goods, of services, of people, of workers, of constituents. That's really the kind of infrastructure we're looking at in this case. No new or increased taxes. And it's the property value increments that really drive the investment source. Next slide. So, um, colorful slide. I think we win the color award on this page, but the, the, this is just a simple illustration of how tax increment works when you set up a district. So starting from the bottom and like a layer cake, move it up. The bottom, you see a period of years, forty-five years. So the district gets created for forty-five years. And the baseline of property tax that's collected within whatever area we choose, and we'll show you some areas now, it's about eight hundred acres. That baseline property tax as it exists in the year that it gets created is frozen in time. And then after that, the blue and the green, the white and the green represent patterns of incremental growth. Some of it comes from the assessed valuation increase two percent or whatever the assessor implements each year. That's the blue. That's what we call incremental growth. And the rest is AV from new development. So on the left, you'll see how the arc sort of moves north, moves up. Because the hash line shows that in the first year, you're probably not going to have a lot of new development. But in, as years move forward, development, uh, accelerates, development aggregates, and so does the property tax increment. And the increment that flows from this is simply the multiplier of the value of the new projects and the hash line escalating times the tax rate, the amount of property tax essentially that gets dedicated to the district. We'll show you some of that in a second. So that's how it works. That's the, these are the mechanics of tax increment. Next slide. So EIFDs were approved about seven years ago, two thousand and fourteen, AB SB six twenty-eight. And there have been subsequent improvements, enhancements to the district and the mechanics of the district and the processes of formation of a district all the way through the years. So the reason this is important is because California as a state is serious about tax increment financing. It abolished, it ended redevelopment in two thousand and eleven, but it started a whole new family of tax increment districts focused primarily on EIFD. There's some other ones and, and have started to move forward. The term's forty-five years from the first bond issuance. So that's about fifty years. It'll take five years to issue the first bond. Excuse me, the governance is the public financing authority that gets created as part of the EIFD process. So what happens is this is a separate financing entity. It is established as a separate entity and valid as a separate entity through the statutory, uh, enactment of the EIFDs. It's led by either a city or county, can't be led by a special district. It excludes using any property tax from school districts, exempt off the table. That's a major departure from redevelopment, by the way. But a city, a county or a special district, they can voluntarily commit a certain amount of tax increment to move that base into increment. That's what happens. That's the multiplier. Okay, next slide. So there's no public vote to create the district. It is an infrastructure district. It is subject to majority protest, but there's no voter approval for bonds. So it really becomes about the planning process. And that's why tonight for El Segundo, I think is really a critical, essential night. Because you have a chance, I think, with this process to really figure out how you fund future improvements. It doesn't have to end with these two projects we put on the tablet here. It, it really can be the beginning. There are other financing projects that you may want to encounter, but it's a kind of a way of life. You basically create the district and you start working toward improvements. It can fund any eligible project, can be any public property with a useful life of fifteen years or more. Again, it's very infrastructure, it's very resiliency, it's very mobility oriented. Community-wide significance, it's purchase, it's construction, expansion, improvement at some level seismic rehabilitation and maintenance. No bike tested needed, needed like redevelopment. And here is an interesting notion about EIFDs. You can set up separate subareas. They do not have to be contiguous. This is very important because strategically you can pick and choose where the areas of growth might be, but you can spend money outside those district boundaries. Huge flexibility. Next slide. So the fundamentals are private property investment or new development, as you saw on that chart. You get an increase in property taxes. A portion is deposited of those new taxes is not deposited in the general fund anymore. Let's be clear about that by affirmatively going forward and picking a tax rate or a portion of your current tax rate. You're, you're dedicating it to that public financing authority in the EIFD. At some point, when that arc gets high enough that we showed you on the other chart, you can issue bonds against that new tax increment. Not new taxes, but new valuation increment. And that can be leveraged to pay an lump sum for key infrastructure that supports economic growth and quality of life. Next slide. So I, I said earlier that there are really huge incredible flexibility of uses wastewater, groundwater, affordable housing, mixed use, transit priority projects, connectivity. We talked about next slide. We have, uh, parks that can be used. So next slide. There we go. Parks and open space, brownfield remediation, civic infrastructure. Next slide. These are just to give you, these come right out of the statute, by the way. All of these titles really are uses that come right out of the statute. Childcare facilities, structures that relate to industrial processes and light and high speed rail. So for us in El Segundo, I mean, the bases are covered in terms of the statutory enabling that occurs and what you can spend your money on, the kinds of projects you can fund. Next slide. So why are public agencies offering the EIFDs? In a couple of slides, you'll see that they are really being looked at and enacted all up and down the state. And particularly in LA County has really moved forward rather aggressively. Well, one, there's minimal impact on residents and businesses. There's no new taxes, right? It does, and it can preserve the general fund because it can capture value from new development projects and take the burden of reinvestment away from the general fund if it's done in a balanced and strategic way. It has a return on investment to the private sector because by making a affirmative commitment for forty-five years that you're going to redirect a certain amount of the tax value that's created by private sector investment to improvements in and outside of the area, it's like floating all the boats higher. This really tells the private sector that the investment they make has a counter reinvestment that's being produced and implemented and executed by the public agency. And because of that, you're also able to attract additional funds because you have private investments going, you have public commitments. And to the extent that, for example, you can get the county to commit and match your share of property tax with theirs, you come together and enhances competitiveness for federal and state grants. In Redondo Beach, we were able to get some Prop sixty-eight money for parks, uh, as a result of a county city partnership around an EIFD at the AES power plant. These are real advantages when it comes to air quality funds, uh, resiliency funding and so on, mobility and transportation. And we can bundle all of these potential sources of revenue with a whole host of local revenue, sales tax, property tax, ground lease revenues, developer impact fees and contributions. Again, so really it's a major cauldron, if you will, of, of ingredients that we get to cook for a long period of time. What meals we serve is up to us. So that, that becomes the issue and that becomes the evaluation. Next slide. To fund projects that benefit the community and the region, this one is exactly being set up that way. There's a long-term committed revenue support that really enables investor incompetent, uh, confidence. And these are evolving economic development tools. You saw the other slide, the number of, uh, the number of, uh, statutory improvements. We have three or four more bills in the hopper right now that continue to improve the effectiveness of these districts. Whether they get approved or not, don't know, but Cosmo's working on a number of them with Cal Ed and the league and Cal Forward and others. The state has added five new districts and has approved over two dozen statutes over this period of time. So there, the, the, the fix is in for EIFDs, I think legislatively. And I think the commitment is there. There's just, it's a relatively nascent business that's in its seventh or eighth year. So that's why you're hearing about it now and you're starting to hear and see the critical mass because it, it can be, it will be, it really is an effective funding tool. Next slide. So this is the, is a busy map and it just shows you where in LA County and the region, you're seeing EIFDs being implemented. We just recently finished one in Carson and West Carson. Interestingly enough, now we're going to be asking, if you say yes, let's do this, let's keep driving on this one. You know, we're going to ask the county to be a participant partner. They've already started a couple of their own EIFDs in, in West Carson. They're working, they've started and approved that one. They've become a partner with the city of Carson, Redondo Beach and Laverne uh, on other EIFDs. And we know of several other applications that are going to be asking the county to become a partner like Palm Dale and others. So you're not alone. This is moving forward. It is a good time. It is a timely period to consider these. The county is now at least on board with a very fair and, uh, uh, and efficient evaluation process. That's what we would be pursuing because county money is important to, uh, achieve as part of the mix here. Next slide. So, uh, just a couple of quick, uh, county participation, uh, examples in Laverne, a transit oriented district around a new orange line station, about thirty to forty million dollars of infrastructure. Cosmo formed this for the city of Laverne. The county, uh, approved their participation in January twenty twenty. It's fully formed, operating. I just did a presentation with the Public Financing Authority Board a couple of weeks ago. Next slide. Uh, Redondo Beach talked about, you know, everyone in South Bay knows this site. Uh, it's not one that's easily hidden. Uh, this is a, uh, this is a fifty acre power plant plus another thirty, forty acres around it. LA County joined the effort in November two thousand and nineteen, District Four, Janice Hahn. But you, you are in that same district, although you have an adjacent district, Holly Mitchell's district, District Two for the bike greenway, uh, where, where there's some impact there. They were engaged, the county was engaged in the formation process. We're still going through that process. Next slide. Uh, Carson City Landfill Remediation Recreation is a very recreation oriented, um, uh, EIFD, the county, uh, basically, uh, took the lead on this. Uh, and, uh, it's really, it's a, it's remediation, it's housing and infrastructure. It was formed in December two thousand and nineteen. LA County joined in November two twenty twenty. This is a large, large, you know, EIFD. It's a city driven EIFD. The county matched, uh, their money, uh, which gave them some good resources, about eighteen hundred or two thousand acres. So it's, uh, that over twice the size of the one we're looking at, uh, in El Segundo. And then finally, the West Carson example, next slide. Um, well, is, this is the, uh, the first county led EIFD in Southern California. Madera County, another client of ours, did want to, two, three EIFD areas in northern and central California. But this one was led by the county and in the unincorporated area of, uh, you know, south of the South Bay. It's really, uh, it's transit oriented. It relates to the Harbor UCLA Medical Center, H UCLA, uh, and the TOD plan, the West Carson TOD plan, which was approved many years ago. So it's again, it's about transit. This one's about job generation, transit, uh, and infrastructure. Next slide. You see a theme here, uh, with all of these. Uh, this is a hundred and thirty-one million dollar infrastructure investment. Uh, funded initially through a SCAG grant and, uh, the resolution of intent to form was just finalized, uh, January twenty twenty-one. So this is the newest one in the, in the county. We worked on this one as well. Next slide. So what about us? Okay, this is the, the in red is the, is the area upon which we would recommend studying. It can be changed. It can be modified. Uh, you see the hash lines looking at the east west connector park place. And on the top right or middle right, you can see the bike way, greenway aviation, uh, connector project. These are, uh, these are the fundamental projects we're looking at. Uh, again, we can add to this list. It's about next slide, eight hundred and twenty plus acres, a twenty-three, twenty-three point four percent of the city. Smaller than some, larger than others. You know, Laverne was about a hundred and fifty. As I said, Carson was two thousand. So you know, you're right in the middle, two hundred and seventy-two parcels, current assessed value of about four billion. That would be your base year. Remember that dark blue base year. And then we're projecting, again, these are just projections, but based on the information we know, the market conditions and the sites that are included in red on this map, we're expecting that over the next ten plus years, we could have one point one billion of potential new development. That's your increment. That's that hash line, right? That's that green. Next slide. El Segundo. So let's talk about the mechanics of this a little bit, right? Because El Segundo receives a pretty low portion of property tax. By the way, eighty-eight cities in LA County only sixteen or so receive over fifteen cents on the dollar. Mostly everyone is under ten. El Segundo no different. And that is one of the inhibitors of an EIFD. Now you have pretty significant activity here. So your low rate still can leverage up a good amount of growth, one point one billion in a reasonable period of time. So you get seven point six, the city gets seven point six percent, seven point six cents on the dollar versus thirty-nine and a half cents on the dollar received by the county. The county is a large recipient of tax, of tax flow from property tax countywide. Their rates are typically between thirty and forty-five percent. Just by, if you're interested in comparison, the largest city I think is LA, LA City of twenty-six cents. So there are cities that get in the twenties, Laverne's eighteen cents, you're seventeen, you're seven point six. You can do a lot with that though. So the thought here and the assumption and the evaluation we'd like to go forward with on the financial side says, okay, look, based on the estimated new private development of one point one billion, and again, those numbers can change, uh, but there are projections. The city could contribute fifty percent of its incremental property tax share or about three point seven eight percent. And the county could match that. So together it'd be about three point, seven point six percent. We'll see the next slide. With that, with that one point one billion, this is sort of the power of the increment. Again, back to that hash line and slide. With that, we could generate sufficient funding to pay for a fairly good portion of both the bike way and the park place rate separation projects. We're budgeting estimated costs of the EIFD budget. This is the portion of those improvements that could come from the EIFD. So we need ten million from bike way, five could come at least at this level of projection from the EIFD. We need a hundred million plus for park place, about a third of it could come from the EIFD based on current projections. Next slide. The bible of the infrastructure of the EIFD is something called an infrastructure financing plan. When you create, should you create an EIFD and you're authorized through a resolution of intention at some point in the future, after we bring back a more complete, more comprehensive analysis, one that gets vetted by the community. Uh, when we bring that back and the numbers and the purpose and the timing still are attractive to all of you and to the community, then the process that we start is a series of public hearings to expose the infrastructure financing plan. Because what the public financing authority executes is an IFP. That's the work plan. It's kind of like the business plan for the district. It has a description and growth goals of the district. It, it proposes specific improvements like the two we're talking about. It has a description and growth goals of the district. It proposes specific improvements like the two we're talking about. It makes findings of community significance because the statute requires it. It has a financing section. It has a public benefits section, fiscal impact. All things that would come to you along with the overall evaluation of go, no-go sometime in the future. We would think August. Next slide. The infrastructure financing plan, when it's drafted and put through a series of public hearings, after you authorize that, is circulated to property owners and residents in the district and to participating taxing agencies. Or remember, we would have been talking to the county and others to participate in because part of the business plan of an EIFD is to get other public money, OPM. We know that there's other people's money, but it's really other public money in the case of an EIFD. The PFA will hold, as I said, three public hearings prior to adoption and the infrastructure financing plan can be amended. Part of the statutory framework of EIFDs enables the EIFDs to finance capitalized maintenance costs paid for in part by tax increment out of the EIFD. In this case, we have an early read on what that maintenance could be for the Bike Way Greenway. By the way, that's not to say that maintenance costs couldn't come from private sector contributions and others. We can't really fund direct operations. So I mean, that is something that really can, has to come from other sources. And that's what grants are for. That's what other allocations of funds are for. We would propose to fund that, the maintenance for the EIFD projects out of the EIFD financing plan, out of the annual cash flow. Something we'll evaluate in this next period of time. I'm going to hand this back to Mr. Mitnick, your city manager, and I think he'll take you through the next steps. We're available to answer questions. We'd be anxious to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can I ask, we go back one slide, please, to page thirty-one? So this is important. When we were before the council on this topic, we heard you loud and clear with respect to the aviation Bike Way Greenway project in terms of, okay, you can use this mechanism to build it. But what about the maintenance, the impact on the general fund? Counsel, you were very clear and you said we needed to work out a way where the general fund was not obligated to pay for that. So since that time, there have been meetings with the different property owners from Imperial all the way down to El Segundo, west of, on the west side of aviation. There's general support. We don't have anything in writing, but we had discussions. Very, the different property owners are very receptive, they're all businesses, very receptive to participating in some sort of CFD or some funding mechanism where each year they pay through their property tax bill, they pay for the cost of maintaining the Bike Way in the Green Belt. So that's really significant. We would of course have to continue negotiations and discussions and get that inked before we came back. But counsel, I wish I could be in the chamber with you. I can look in the eye and say, we adhere to your direction there. If in fact you decide to go forward on that project. So we can go to the next slide. I'll talk about the next steps, then we'll stop talking and we'll listen to your comments and your questions. So here we are today, March second. We're talking to you about the projects and the funding strategies. There's a lot of groundwork that has to be done in due diligence to design and get the projects going, but we have to do the labor first. So what are we asking from you tonight in addition to presenting this update? We're asking you to direct staff through the city manager to evaluate, continue to evaluate funding options and then to pursue funding applications to go out and look at these grants and funding sources and go apply for them. Next page, please. Then in the spring, we will work between now and the spring, the latter part of the spring, because we're going into the spring, to further refine the infrastructure funding strategy. We have to fine tune the construction cost estimates. Now Elias and his team, working with Metro and others, they, we already got that design grant. And by the way, the council played a key role. Mayor Boils, you led the charge getting support from the other South Bay cities and so on. We do have the design money, total five point three five million. Ain't done. And the RFP is on the street. As we mentioned, the deadline is April twenty-seventh. So we'll fine tune the cost estimates for Park Place and on the Greenway Bike Way project. And by the way, we have to work with the railroad on getting access to that land. We've had some good discussions. We'll keep going. So we'll look at the revenue projections. We'll continue to work, as Larry said, with the property owners and the businesses, other interest groups and so on. Next slide. Then we'll come back in the summer with a potential EIFD formation. And remember, the financing district is just one component. There are different components to make these projects work. We'll work with LA County on their EIFD and the county is interested, very supportive of doing this. They have to see some work there and we'll pursue other funds with Metro, Measures R, Measure M, the SP One Grant, all the different layers of funding, if you will. And we'll work with the private parties, the Mar Venture, CDC and so on. They're going to pay and play a big part of this, of course. Then our goal is to come back to you before the summer or before August seventeenth with a series of recommendations. We're sorry, it was a long presentation, complicated stuff, very exciting. This is their disclaimer and now we're at the questions part. So thank you for your indulgence and your time. And now we'll quiet, we'll take your questions.
Scott, would you close the presentation, please? So I can see, there you go. Okay, Counselor Drew.
Um, so when I'm reading through this, I think I would maybe be expecting a different presentation and that it was a little bit more of an informational one. That was a sales presentation and don't get me wrong, I'm all for a good sales presentation. But that was thirty-eight pages of positives or pros and not one slide about cons. So in any kind of thing like this, there are cons that come along with this. You know, what are the long-term effects? You mentioned maintenance costs may or may not be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Okay, that's a big number for a town like us who is already struggling to do capital improvement projects within the three and a half square miles that we live in. So I'm a little bit taken aback on the fact that it seemed to be a very one-sided conversation about the positives. So to me, there has to be more than thirty-seven slides of how good EIFDs are.
Well, let me take a stab there, then I'll turn to you. The EIFD is just one portion of the funding for these projects. Forty, for less than forty million dollars for Park Place. I'll tell you what a con is though, counsel, and we've talked about this before. One of the cons or the downside is we are committing future property tax money that would normally go into the general fund. And I've had, now, for those of us practitioners who've been dealing with this for decades, with the loss of redevelopment. And I had this discussion with Larry and your team early on. I was personally and professionally resistant to giving up future property tax money. But here's why it makes tremendous sense. Because it's good for El Segundo. And why? Because we're able to leverage other monies that we wouldn't have otherwise. The county money, the money from Metro, other outside funding sources, it would not flow in here if we didn't have a local share. So if we wanted to do this project without the district, we'd be paying future property tax and other general fund monies anyhow. So we're leveraging more money. It took me a long time to come to that conclusion, but I have to disclose that that would be a potential downside that you're giving up future property tax revenue. However, if we don't do these, if we don't do the Park Place project, we're not going to have the growth in tax dollars because a lot of that development won't happen. So that, I'm not here to sell it. I'm here to tell you the council's been struggling with this for a few decades to do the Park Place project. So this is one way to make it go forward. You don't have to go down this path. There are other paths.
And just to add to that, because there is no attempt here to oversell or undersell. The real question here is, do you further evaluate? Because that is where all of the negatives will come out. When we do the financial analysis, you'll see how much you're leaving behind or taking away from the general fund versus how much you're getting elsewhere. I think that if you don't pass the but-for test, which is what we put this through, that but for this district, certain improvements wouldn't happen and certain elevation in tax basis wouldn't occur. If you can't get to that test, then you have a negative result in my view. And that is, that is a very, I think, good conclusion. That's an excellent comment. The point here tonight is really to explain how it works, know that it's one funding source among others and that it's really compelling if you get enough other fund sources to make up for the fact that you are redirecting some funding that would come from the general fund otherwise. That's the key. So that is the primary negative. You know, the other negatives really relate to the fact that things happen in forty-five years. You may not experience growth as quickly. You have to factor that in. We have to look at realistic projections, right? We've heard of recessions, we've heard of pandemics, we've heard of things that dislocate an economy. All very key. There are other negatives. We may or may not be able to come to a reasonable agreement with the private sector that surrounds especially the Park Place improvement. We have complicated transactions with, you know, certain developers that, you know, would really require them to make an investment on a timely basis, perhaps make a contribution, perhaps put together an assessment district and self-impose some costs on themselves for a period of time. You may not get there. So these are all the real evaluation points. Tonight was really just to basically create the basis of why that evaluation is worthwhile.
Yeah, Counselor, first start.
So, Mr. Cosmon, can you just explain with the EIFD, you had said that you would create this district where there would be a separate oversight committee that would be determining how the money is spent? So does that take the power away from the city council to determine where that money's spent? And then what components will they be able to do? Would they be able to make zoning changes to that property?
Two great questions. Let's take the second one first. The Public Financing Authority, which is the guiding public body that manages the enhanced infrastructure financing district and implements that infrastructure financing plan has no zoning power. And that's an important question and answer because a lot of the value creation comes from that mindset or that set of powers. That's all under your control. No depletion of that. First question, you are creating, and the statute enables it only on this basis, you are creating when you form an EIFD, which comes from you, by the way, as the lead public agency. You have to affirmatively say by resolution of intent, you would like to form and enhance infrastructure financing district. By the way, if the county joins, they have to do the same resolution of intent. Those resolutions of intent set up a public financing authority, which is comprised of at least two members of the local city, could be three, and a couple of members from each other taxing agency that sits on the public financing board in addition to two public members, which could be representative of the school district, it could be a nonprofit, it could be a community organization, it could be a citizen, it could be a property owner. So you have essentially two public members and then you have five public agency members to the extent that you have more than one public agency contributing tax increment. And likely in this case, the majority will be held by three members of the city council on that public financing authority board. That's how it works in Laverne. That's how it works in Placentia, where we set up the district. County of Orange in Placentia has two members, city has three. El Segundo, we'd expect you to have three. Those would be council members. You would select among yourself who would be on that board. Figure the county will have two and there'll be two public members that get selected by the enabling leading agencies, which is you and the county. So that's how it works, but it is a separate public financing authority because you need that authority to be able to issue the public financing. And that authority, by the way, is responsible to implement the infrastructure financing plan. One more point is after you create the public financing authority and you go through three public hearings in which all of the constituents are notified, all the landowners are notified within the proposed district, the first act of the public financing authority is to adopt the infrastructure financing plan. Hopefully that answers your question.
Any other questions? Mayor, pretend.
Yeah, how did these two projects become linked? There are, this is the first time I've ever heard these two initiatives in any way associated with one another. And I've spent, I could not begin to count the number of hours with regional transit boards working on the Park Place piece, and I know the mayor working on the decennial funds transfer to make available, you know, upwards of thirty-five to forty million dollars of Measure R money to come to the Park Place project. I have never heard Aviation Boulevard addressed in conjunction with that. Is there a reason these two very distinct and separate projects would be attached to one another in this presentation?
They are only attached because they are really listed as primary potential projects for the district. The district really gets created and you have just a unfettered choice of public improvement projects that you may want to consider. That's what happens in this next period of time. Two projects that seem to have made sense for a variety of reasons in discussion with some of the private owners. Of course, the Park Place project, because that's been under discussion for quite a while, as you just stated. The other that came out was the Bike Way Greenway improvement because it started to link a number of private investments along the aviation corridor and serves as a front door to the city and the rest of the region, which gives it some regionality. So strategically, it made sense to put it on a list to evaluate. These are just a laundry list. They're not necessarily linked, other than they have one common relative, the EIFD. That's really what it is.
I would, this is, I guess, for the council. I would significantly question whether it's appropriate or integral to something as important as the Park Place extension to tie it to a Greenway project. And that's not in any way impugning the validity or importance of the Greenway project. It is just, these are, in orders of magnitude, you know, they are, these are two very, very different. And one is a matter of significant regional import and one is a really nice thing. But I don't even know insofar as the Greenway, do we have any clarity on the ownership issue? I mean, that is not city property. That is, the railroad still owns that, has a long-term lease to Metro and is, I believe, subletting their own property back from Metro. Let alone, you know, the future disposition of the Northrop property leading up to, you know, that last thirty acres. I, so again, I'm not, I'm not in any way, this is not throwing stones at the Greenway. It just seems like that is a bit of a tail wagging a dog when we talk about really trying to address this Park Place sixty-million-dollar delta that lives out there, presuming the forty million dollars of Measure R funding is sacrosanct from the decennial transfer. This sixty-million-dollar window that we try to close, it just seems an odd thing to throw on with it. So I'm not, again, as you said, this is just part of the laundry list. This is not the time for these sorts of decisions. But I just, this is the first time I ever, ever in, you know, hour three millionth of my life, heard the two mentioned together. And I guess with that, while I see Elias is on here from Public Works, do we have, are we still on course from the Measure R funding for the Park Place with the, I remember what it is, thirty-seven million or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just to respond to that, because can we put up slide twenty-five for a second? Just, it would help, I think. So I think your comment is absolutely right. I mean, here is, this is a start kit for discussion. You have this district and there are potential improvement projects that could be implemented. So we had one over on the right, Aviation, one which is really mission-critical center. I mean, in working, and you can see, we just identified those. I think there are other projects that we could identify in this next period of time. Those happen to be the two that, you know, sort of jumped out as worthwhile of discussion and evaluation. And they have lots of details to get through. As you say, the property control on aviation is a complicated issue. But I'll tell you this, you know, in the thirty or forty of these that we're doing up and down the state, because in particular with the EIFDs, because you can have separate and even non-adjacent project areas, it's not infrequent for a community to sort of deal with, let's say, a suburban area of a community and then a downtown and then a transit center. And they're not, they're all have one relative and that is the EIFD and the potential to get funding for them. And they all bear evaluation in the initial analysis. They may not make it through to the end of the story. They could drop off. I think that that happens all the time in EIFD analyses. So this is a place to start. Clearly Park Place is, you know, is the, you know, is sort of the, I'll just call it the trophy prop project here. And you may be right, at the end of the day, when we look at the analysis of value add, all the resources may go there or less or more. We just don't know. That's the discussion. That's really up to you. less or more, we just don't know. That's the discussion. That's really up to you. Whatever you want to evaluate, we will go ahead and evaluate and bring back, back to the other comment, the pros and the cons, because we'll be there. They will have positives and negatives. Tonight is really just about possibility and what we could evaluate.
And do some of these funding sources, do they require uh, E I F D as a prerequisite to apply for a number of these grants or the S B one funds, or could the city independently as a taxing agency, uh, apply for those regardless of creating one of these special districts?
Absolutely. Great question. And we are in this law where, you know, the statutory framework, which continues to evolve. You can answer is the city can always independently as a public agency apply for these funds. The policy leverage that gets gained or achieved by putting a county and a city and a special district together to go after money tends to be a very, you know, a very weighty story in a competitive grant round. And you have a state, by the way, that is really interested in things like mobility and air quality and congestion relief. So the grant sources tend to have priorities that match that of an E I F D, because you're showing up now, not with a city that has a budget and a police department and a fire department. You know, I'm a former city manager. You're showing up with a district whose life and blood is about installing an infrastructure financing plan as defined by the projects it picks. So it's a very compelling argument to have. One, we're dedicated to it. Number two, so are they, and we join together in a public joint venture. So you tend in this evolving world of grants and E I F Ds, our expectation is that the continued success of E I F Ds going after regional funding will be much improved as they continue to secure this money. It'll be better.
In your view, is it to our advantage in applying for funds to have a greenway project, even if that is not the, the main element of the, if the main effort is park place by addressing a greenway project, would it make it more likely or appealing to attract some of this grant money?
I, I think it could be more appealing for certain grant money pockets that really match those uses. Yes, number one. Number two, I think there's an appealing element frankly to other public agencies in the region, let's say like the county that you know, has, you know, serves multiple areas. So it's a regionalization type project. So look, this is, again, I really want to encourage the council to to see this for the way that we see it at Cosmo, because we've been at these for quite a while. Tonight, this is the start point of a conversation. Anything's on the table. I really, I think it's important to understand that we haven't even begun to take a look at how to, what are the negatives? What's the downside when you make a decision to put in the bike way, greenway? What is the downside? If you only allocate forty million, let's say, out of the potential increment and you have sixty million available, you're, you will get all of that. But the point is, you asked the question by having some diversity in improvements. And part of that diversity being the benefits to the region from various different types of improvements. Very helpful, very helpful. I'll give you the Redondo Beach A S example. Part of the benefit is just remediating a wetlands. Right? Another part of the benefit was creating open space. Another part of the benefit was creating tax increment that basically enabled perhaps less dense development on the rest, rest of the property or a more balanced approach. So these were all strategic decisions that, you know, or elements of an A, of a E I F D that come into play. It's very much a business plan discussion at the end of the day.
And one last question, and I promise I'll get back in my box, but do, do E I F Ds have a statutory lifespan of forty-five years, or can we attach a, a, a shorter duration to match the length of the bond issue?
You can attach a shorter duration. Uh, you can and, and that happens at times. We have a couple, we have at least one district where part of the funding is attenuated at a year, at a year certain, which is short of forty-five years. So it's another evaluation of pluses and minuses that comes on the revenue expenditure side that we'll give you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I got a couple of questions, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you again. Um, first one is in your estimation, this could be your Scott, maybe Elias, I'm not sure, but um, how much minimum, in minimum would be required in E I F D to activate the balance of the roughly hundred million dollars required for Park Place? And what roughly do you anticipate from the private sector in their contribution?
So our one point one billion of improvements, it comes from a list of projects that we were able to sort of vet very preliminarily with the city staff as to what the expectation might be in the region, in this area. Produced about forty million of revenue that, that's what you saw. So the question is, you know, how do we, can that be elevated or is that too aggressive? What happens? Let's say in years fifteen through twenty-five, it is reasonably reliable. The further we go out, the harder it is to rely on those numbers. So we aren't far enough, Mr. Mayor, in the evaluation to, to give you, I think, as solid a answer as we would like to be able to. We just had done enough analysis to say we can generate this much with a reasonable expectation of.
Yeah. I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't think my question was clear. This is more related to, before E I F Ds come up, having been involved in this conversation for several years related to Park Place specifically. The I F D was not in the car jet. And we were looking at other ways to get this project done. So my question is, maybe this is for Elias. Of the hundred million in total, knowing that we've got money coming in from Metro, we're going to have private sector money, and we're going to have E I F D or some other source. What do you think, I mean, I hate to blow the whole forty million, Larry, if that's what you think the total possibility is for E I F D. We allocate all of that towards Park Place. Is there a minimum threshold that will help activate that project in terms of private sector dollars and metro dollars? And if you don't know the answer now, we can come back to that later, but I certainly would want to understand that, too.
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So uh, these type of projects have like multi legs to the stool. Uh, or you could say a three-legged stool, but um, it really is a three, a P three type project. And so we looked at, there was always going to be a city share of some amount. Right? It was always envisioned, the local government would put money on the table. Otherwise, the project won't go forward. And the developers would pay a pretty significant amount as well. And then the other, other piece would come from Metro, federal government, state government, something. So when we brought Cosmo on board, it was to help us figure out, how, how do we get the city share? And, and how do we use that to, or how do we leverage other money? So we figure we can raise about forty million through an E, E I F D. And with it, we're recommending the lion's share of it eighty-eight percent to go to the park place project. So, or you could say it'll be a hundred percent of that. That's one piece. Then there's the metro piece. We're fighting hard. We're using Kobe King and others to help us get money for that. We got the design money. That's good. Hundred percent paid for by Metro. The private sector players that are part of this, they know they're going to have to put money on the table. We just can't tell you right now exactly how much will be. Will it be one-third, 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 maybe? And we have to figure out what is the cost, and then we'll come back and figure out the missing pieces. There's, there's also federal money.
And I guess, yeah. God, I just get nervous about borrowing that much money to get a pretty nominal return. I mean, Larry, to your point, we are the lowest. I thought it was more like six percent that we get as a property tax allocation, not seven point six. We are one of the lowest, if not the lowest, like bottom eight, I think.
Yes.
Of the eighty-eight cities in LA counties. So we're borrowing against tax, you know, the future, future tax revenues. And the, the primary beneficiary is going to be the corporate developers. We're going to get a valuation of property tax, but unless we can somehow demonstrate a multiplier effect. It's, I think it's going to be, I, I find it more difficult for us to substantiate and justify a project like this, known because we have such a low property tax um, component. So that's just my initial concern. And then this leads me to my next question was Larry, if E I F D, I know you're an expert in opportunity zones. Unfortunately, we don't have any of those close by, but all these other vehicles. If we didn't have E I F D, what would we consider to bridge that gap with Park Place in terms of Scott, to your point, the city's component?
Yeah, I believe we would be uh, in a more singular position as opposed to a joint venture position to go after all of the same pockets of money. I think we'd be using a portion of our, uh, of our property tax anyway, to the extent that we would have some room in the budget. It is possible that uh, you could take some city assets and finance lease, you know, lease revenue bonds, uh, you know, and but, you know, as a public financial advisor to many cities, I, I don't like financing quote unquote city hall for an economic development project. But that is what a lot of cities do, uh, and, and because they, they don't have the ability to, or the desire, they don't have the ability to generate money elsewhere. Another way is just, you know, say, look, this is something we need and ask the public to vote on it, you know, and that would be a that's another way, a general fund obligation vote for capital improvement. Those are, you know, generally you do G O by a vote, lease revenue with a bunch of assets, go after grants as a city, as a small city versus putting a cloak over an area, value capturing a percentage of that growth, trying to get other public money to match that value capture and escalate the value capture and level that and leverage that future growth. That's the difference. You know, in direction. And we do, you know, obviously we do all of that. We have multiple clients. I mean, those are policy and financial decisions that you can make. In general, we find, and the reason you hear a little bit of enthusiasm about this. We, in generally, we find that this is a better way to get other public money. This is a better way not to do lease revenue bonds and, and, and sort of leverage city assets that are hard, hard fought to keep. So, you, you know, not that this is perfect, we just think this is a better approach. Again, if the analysis bears it out, we're just not there yet.
Got it. Okay, one more question. On aviation, at the Council of Governments and also at SCAG, SCAG, it's been the themes about micro mobility and, and it, um, COG, it's all about the local travel network. And tying in the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan as the footprint for tying in neighborhood electric vehicles, scooters, electric bikes, et cetera. They, I looked at the map again recently, uh, this week, and it's clear El Segundo is on an island. We have a bike, we have this local travel network for low speed, twenty-five mile an hour golf carts, scooters, et cetera, in a safe zone that we see so much in El Segundo. There's no way to connect south to Manhattan Beach, and there's no way connect, to connect east to Hawthorne or Englewood safely on the local travel network, probably legally for that matter. Does the, is there a way with aviation, has there been consideration, or we talked about bikes, but is there a way to have a protected lane for any of these or something at a slower speed? Because that is a major problem for us. We cannot connect. We've not been able to figure out how to connect, barring going on the beach itself with another path down to the south, like to where you live, Larry. So um, it's just something as we explore that project to look into, because I know there's grant money for those projects for L T Ns. And I think it's a great idea to explore. We could wait to, if we're going to go forward with that project.
That's a potential exploration for sure. Yep.
And then the final question, Larry, I think for me is fees and ongoing expenses with the I F Ds, is it like a money raised where the person that's doing the raise gets, like, how does it work? Gets some points on the deal or what's the structure? And then what kind of ongoing fees could we look forward to experiencing?
We, we have a, uh, we have a, you know, a budget now to get to this first level of evaluation. I don't remember exactly what that number is. I think it's in the fifty thousand dollar range uh, at this point. I think if you, part of the financing plan moving forward, uh, that you would look at in making a decision to green light to formation or not, will include a full budget of costs. I mean, you are going to have some legal costs for sure. There will be some engineering. And, and we won't, we, so we won't be the only cost, but for now, I think Scott and the staff are trying to, you know, maximize results and keep the budget fairly streamlined as we look at the possibilities and then open it up as it seems like there could be a good way to go here. So that, that's your initial, um, and you've spent some money already, by the way. I think you've spent some money with us, probably about thirty-five thousand to get to this point. And so you're going to be, you know, you'll be spending at least that, that money plus the fifty and probably some outside costs that relate to this initial effort to get you to a point of a decision. And you'll get a whole bunch of going forward.
Okay, but like roughly speaking, ongoing basis from the E F I D you did in other areas, like a couple hundred a year to maintain the separate district or?
Yes, about a hundred thousand a year to maintain a separate district. You can take that out of the E I F D budget. Uh, that money can go up if you really are pursuing some grants and you're throwing some resources to that, so that can fluctuate a little bit. Uh, and, and of course, that, that's the nice thing about having some other uh, public money in the deal is if you can share that and support the budget that way.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all that. Okay, I'm looking at my colleagues to see, yeah, Councilmember Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I think that it would be very helpful if we had some sort of model set up for this in regards to the financing portion. Um, how much money we would, we would be putting in, how much money the other, I mean, we saw briefly a diagram there as to what we'd put in, but ultimately what this would mean for our general fund moving forward. You know, that piece of the property tax that we have, what is it forecasted in the coming years? What portion of that would have to be committed to this type of uh, financing um, mechanism? Uh, I think I, I, I will echo some of my fellow council members' statements. I did not expect this, this evening, um, I would have, I, it's an update. This is an option. I get it. I think this option should come with a uh, a stipulation to a future meeting study session on E I F Ds. Because here it is, I feel like we're all trying to learn on the fly. I mean, I Googled E F, E F I D California and Cosmo is like the fifth hit on the Google search. So clearly this is something that Cosmo does. And you know, there's an interactive map here, shows all the different municipalities that have them. I'm not saying that it's good and or bad. Um. In one of the slides, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cosmo, you, uh, you mentioned that they don't have to be connected or something in, in regards to a district. Um. I didn't, I didn't quite pick up on that exactly, because the map you showed, the district drawn out was essentially uh, the eastern section of El Segundo with a huge cutout for most of the area that is already developed. Um, directly used of our residential area. Um, so I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand how if we, if we set up this district and, you know, long-term, like we're calling out X amount of dollars for this many years, well, what if there's a, a council after us twenty years from now that says, hey, there's a, there's this infrastructure project or there's this, you know, project that we want to work on. And well, if we already have a district established, can they establish a district on top of that? Can they, like, like, how, how would that, how would that play out?
Yeah, all good questions. Uh, first, let's get the first one cleared up. When I said district areas don't have to be adjacent, so if for some reason, I don't have the map in front of me, one of those red rectangles was off to the right, not connected to the red box, that would be okay under the law. That's all I was saying. Now, that's very, that's very helpful, by the way, because in transit sort of oriented E I F Ds, you could have a area around one transit station, even in one community, and then another area surrounding a different transit stop in the same community or a different community, and E I F Ds allow that. I mean, because it's really about infrastructure and mobility, they made these things so that they're flexible in terms of piecing together one E I F D area or multiple. So that's what I was getting to there. And, and many communities start out with looking at a couple of different areas. The way that El Segundo ended up coming together, at least on a travel loan basis, was you had contiguity. I'm just saying that it, it doesn't have to be that way, uh, for sure. So that was one question.
Before, before you go off of that, though, can you tell me, why did we not just paint the entire east side of Pacific Coast Highway red? On that map?
The entire east side.
I mean, how, what was the, what was the thought process or the rationale behind what was chiseled out and not included?
Um, I, I, I could address that. On, on Park Place, we were looking at a nexus. Um, who benefits from the Park Place project, the north-south traffic improvements, and it'd be primarily on Pacific Coast Highway and some, and El Segundo Boulevard, uh, and then the Raytheon property. So there was a, there was a logical rationale basis for that. And then, um, when the concept of the aviation project coming in, that allowed for putting all the properties on the aviation corridor. And the properties on the aviation corridor benefit also from Park Place. We're trying to make it logical and rational and to Councilmember Drew's point earlier on the downside. Uh, we, we wanted to also protect the future, um, general fund pro, uh, portion of the property tax going forward. So we were trying to look for that sweet spot balance. Prop, uh, portion of the property tax going forward. So we were trying to look for that sweet spot balance.
Scott, I think I owe you another answer. I'm just trying to get the question again. Can you remind me what the second part of that question was? I'm sorry.
The rationale, the rationale for not taking the entire, uh, east side of El Segundo in this district, that, that is proposed right now. It's just proposed to us as a concept. Um, and a tool, but, uh, you know, to Mr. Mitnick, to your point, uh, one can make the argument that any business on Nash Street. Will benefit from this because they can drive directly south and connect all the way to Rosecrans. Right? Um, and so, uh, and if these. I guess you're going to answer my, my other question if you remembered it, because I rambled on for so long, but my other question was. Can we add projects to this district over time? And if that's the case, then those projects could benefit the rest of those properties. That now are not included in the district. Can the district change over time? I mean, uh, there's a bit of a snowball effect to the question here.
Yeah, no, the, the statute allows for the infrastructure fl, uh, financing plan to be amended. So you can add projects on the infrastructure financing plan. You can add areas, it just, it means modifying the district and the statutes to allow for that as well. So. There is some flexibility there. I would say this to, to all of you that these. There are, uh, there is a bill currently in the, just introduced three days ago. Uh, which actually clarifies sub areas and the ability to amend them and have di, different tax increment basis. And I, as I said earlier, this is really an evolving set of statutes. So. The direction is exactly in, in, in the same line that you're asking and the clarifications continue to come. But fundamentally, the bones of the question that you're asking is yes, you can add and modify as you move forward.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask a conceptual question. If, um, in regards to Park Place, we'll, we'll put that on an island here. Park Place project, let's say that, um, the council with the past, you know, ten years since this project was originally, you know, conceived. Has slowly been saving money for the portion that the city is thinking that we're going to have to front. Okay, so let's just say, in theory, the city has saved sixty million dollars. For our portion of this, say, hundred plus million dollar project. We had that when this, the E I F D, something new, it came out. Would you, as our financial advisor, if I said, hey, should I spend the sixty that I've saved? Or should I do an E I F D? So that I can get county map, more county matching, more state funding, so maybe I don't have to spend my whole sixty. Would, would, is that something that you would recommend? Or would you say, no, spend your sixty and, and the forty from the other place?
Probably wouldn't recommend, say, spend the sixty. I'd probably recommend looking at a hybrid strategy. And again, looking at that point, which parts of the project really matched other funding sources that would be efficient to go get. And leverage your local resources for other uses, which may be related or unrelated. That's generally the way I would look at it.
Okay, because I'm definitely a fan of, of anything that would take advantage of other people's money, not ours. Um, the county who takes a big portion of the property tax and any state funding, funding sources. So if this is something that would put us in a position to leverage that more, um, I could potentially get behind it. But, uh, again, I think if Mr. Mitnick, uh, you would ask ultimately for us to give direction. The direction from this council member would be that, uh, I need to see all these numbers on paper, how it would play out. Speaking of the aviation, uh, Greenway project, I think the direction we said was that as long as it didn't cost us any money. Um, but an E I F D would. It would, it would cost us some property tax money, uh, in the future. And so, um. I think that, uh, it is an option, it is one of the options out there for funding this, but I think that it doesn't necessarily fall directly into the realm of. Not costing, um, the general fund any money. That's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions before we move to determining whether, whether or not we have council consensus to receive and file the presentation? No? Okay. Do we have council consensus to receive and file? Anyone opposed to receiving and filing? No? Okay. Uh, next up is what, what I think staff really is asking, I think, I know, is they're asking us to. Approve directing the city manager to evaluate funding options and pursue funding applications, working with applicable funding participants. And report back to city council with recommendations by August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Is that right, Scott?
I guess, sir, and there'll be plenty of, of meetings and, uh, discussions about various components of all this. This is. Really just to get started and, and to move forward.
So as part of that, because that, that really relates specifically to the funding. But I'm hearing my colleagues ask a lot of questions about the two projects independently. And what would be included in those projects? So would we see that first or how would that play out from a time standpoint?
Um, the, the answer, before anything is committed, you would absolutely see it and have plenty of opportunity to, um, discuss it. We, we got really good feedback here tonight. Uh, this will allow us to start exploring further funding options, uh, partnerships. Uh, and applying for certain funds, uh, with the main driver being Park Place. The, uh, let me make it clear too, on the aviation, that, that whole corridor, the county's very interested in that. And that allows us to get access to county money that we wouldn't have otherwise. It actually does result in a net gain in for Park Place. Because it allows us to have access to money we wouldn't have access to otherwise. And we're happy to come back and further, um, e- explain that and make that more clear.
Does it make sense, Scott, to have, be, between now and August seventeenth is a long time. I know it'll take that time, much time for Larry, for your firm, Cosmo and Associates to probably. Put together all the funding options and work on that, but in the interim, could we have another presentation from staff?
We, we, we could, but here's the deal. We also have Kobe King. He's, now he has some clarity about, um, the lobbying he's doing to get funding. We've got the budget we're working on, our capital projects, so this really between now we're in March to August, that'll go by fairly quickly. Um, we will, we will have more clarity.
What I'm saying, Scott, is what I heard, and maybe I'm wrong, and I saw the mayor pro temp come off mute, what I think I heard was. We're interested in learning more about the funding and in parallel, we'd also like to know more about the individual. Project and what's entailed in that and what our options are. And they're almost two in parallel discussions. Is that, Chris, you came off mute?
Yeah, I, 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 I thought we had mooted at least the idea of a, of a study session on this. Had been in the, in, in, in the offing a little bit ago, just because it is a bit of a, a somewhat of an esoteric. Statutory process. Is that, I mean, that might be rather than sort of belabor it tonight or, or at a meeting four months down the road if we feel. You know, like we don't understand what's going on. Should, should we have that study since we learn a more? I mean, I, I've seen, I've seen Larry's presentation before, so it's like cheated. Uh, I saw it in, in eighty-eight cities, so, you know, I, I got all a hundred slides. But, uh, I think for the, for, for the, the course of this, we may, I mean, we may want to learn more about that. And then if there is a tangible reason to link different areas together, because. You know, the, the, the sum of the parts is greater than the whole. I, I, I don't know. I just, I remember that. I think that, I thought we talked about that earlier. There might be a separate study session.
Well, yeah, this is sort of, this is that actually, um, and looking at, just trying to set the counter. How about if we come back in August and have that be the, the study session? And in the meantime, we can go explore fu, um, funding mechanisms for the Park Place project.
Yeah, Councilor Drew.
Um, I guess here, here's my point on this. If, if the point of this presentation was to. Have council decide to allow you to pursue funding options. I don't think the presentation met up with what your takeaway was, to be honest with you. I, I honestly just felt like. We were being pushed in one direction. So that's why I'm a little off guard. If, if the idea is. Hey, let's take a look at what we can accomplish. And then let's talk about it before we do anything. Let's look at the pros and cons. I'm, I agree on those types of things. I've just never seen that big of a presentation that detailed. When all you're really asking is, is for permission to seek funding options. So I think that's what, that's what threw me off. I can't speak for everybody else, but, but that's where, where I'm at on that. So. I don't have any issue going after it. I just. What was in the staff report and, and what's explained here is just not what I saw.
Understood. Um, and the council will recall, uh, the city's been working on the Park Place project for quite some time, going after the metro money. This is an extension of that. We're trying to be well positioned to compete for the next round of metro funding to, for the construction project. So this purpose was, how do we leverage more money at the local level? So, um, sorry if it's a, a little bit confusing, but.
So the ask is basically giving you permission to go and work on possible funding and come back to us in August and it's going to cost. Fifty to a hundred grand between now and then, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure on the fifty to a hundred grand in terms of.
Well, what are the fees, what would the fees be to continue to engage Cosmo and Associates between now and then?
Oh, I think it'd be less than that. Um, um. I, Larry, do we, um, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that because that's a few months' work, um.
Yeah, no, between now and August, I was really using fifty thousand dollars as a benchmark, fifty to a hundred to get to. An initial authorization to establish the district, which includes a lot of the detailed discussions that you were talking about. That's all. So.
Yeah.
We'll spend some portion of that in the next three to four months, depending on the level of detail we have to go through. So. You know, it's twenty-five or thirty or whatever it is. It's certainly not fifty or a hundred in three months. I mean, that's.
Okay, thanks.
And we are working in concert with our private sector partners here, you know, they're, they're not here at the table, they're watching, but we are. Working very closely with C D C and Mar Venture and the, and the others. Um, because the, the, the future of, of those projects are tied to this, so.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Councilor Persdak.
Yeah, so I think what, for, for me, what we need to see is, uh, you know, you said there's other options. And you, you presented just the E I F D as the solution. And to, um, Councilmember Drew's point. I think you need to come back and give us kind of A, B, or C, some options. Here's how the different funding could work. And that we can really understand, because I really feel like we're being pushed down this path of the door with E I F D and that's the only solution. And I, I think we need to have a broader perspective of what is available and the pros and cons for each, each funding source.
Yeah, the way I read Carol, the, what's in here, it's like to evaluate funding options and pursue funding applications. It doesn't specifically mention E I F D, but I also felt like the presentation was almost exclusively centered around E F I D. Um, I still, I think we're going to, we're there where we can make a motion on that. I'm still struggling with. Not understanding, we got a really preliminary presentation of, on the Greenway, it, or the Green Belt Aviation, Greenway, whatever we're calling it. We had a lot of residents from the adjacent community come out, support that project vocally. I haven't, I can't recall us getting a second level of detail in terms of what we're planning. Is it going to be part of the local travel network? What, are we sure the bike path will be part of that, the bike plan? Um, what will it look like? To Mayor Pro Tem's questions, are the. Are the infrastructure, the roadway, the curbside, is all that unencumbered? Have we figured out the railway situation? To me, it feels like there's a lot of loose ends that need to work in parallel. So I'd hate to go fast forward to August and we're voting on how we're going to finance this stuff, but we don't know what we're doing yet. That's what I'm struggling with is I don't see the path forward logistically. Forget about the financing, but what are we looking to get done? While we're figuring out how we're going to pay for it. So I would prefer that we, we all, you know, we, I'm in favor of going forward with this, pursuing funding options, be it E I F D or other. By August seventeenth, as long as we're in parallel, working to understand it comes back to us before then, well before then, what we want to get accomplished. Because I don't want to be making decisions about whether or not we're going to go pursue a forty million dollar E I F D when the objectives are not crystal clear.
Understood.
That's, that's where I'm feeling. I, I don't, I'm looking to my colleagues if they share the sentiment. Lance says yes. Okay, Carol.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say just to check in, even if it doesn't have the, you know, fine tuned, sharp pencil numbers, but, so here's the plan. You know, this becomes this, which becomes one of those, which ties into this. So we ask for one of the, you know, the whole Rube Goldberg device. Sort of laid out, because forty-five years and, and, and fifty to sixty million dollars is a, is a hell of a commitment for, for El Segundo.
Okay, I think everyone's, I see everyone nodding. Okay, we have the census there. So Scott, you understand what we're looking for, right? It'll come back to us well before August?
Yeah, and, and this is extreme, this is extremely helpful, counsel, so thank you. And I'll just end it by stating that, um. We're, we're, it's not like we're in a mad rush here to, to move forward on both projects. The Park Place has a, a higher level of urgency, if you will. But that, um, we certainly have time. We absolutely have time.
Okay, so do we have a motion directing the city manager to evaluate funding options and pursue funding applications? Work with the political funding participants and report back to city council with recommendations by August seventeen, twenty twenty one? Anyone?
Pimentel, so moved.
Great, thanks, sir.
Nickel's second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Drew.
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel.
Aye.
Councilmember Persdak.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, Pimentel.
Yes.
And Mayor Boils.
Yes, and I just wanted Larry, Eli, Scott, it was a good presentation. We learned a lot. Thank you. And appreciate that. All right, next up, we have the twenty twenty crime summary recommendation. Chief Whalen, good to see you again.
Good evening, sir. Allow me to share my screen. All right, uh, I, you can see the PowerPoint. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and the El Segundo community. As your chief of police, it's my honor. Speak with you this evening about what occurred from a policing perspective in the year twenty twenty. Unfortunately, unlike in prior years, when I had the good fortune to talk about reductions in criminal activity or perhaps modest increases, this year will be different. Bottom line up front is we saw significant increases in three categories of crime that drove our overall increase. It's important to remember that while percentage increases may seem significant, the raw numbers are small in comparison. And I don't say this in an attempt to minimize the impact these additional crimes had on our community. Rather, I just wanted to frame this conversation appropriately. You'll see in this slide, we had a twenty-five percent overall increase in part one crime. This equates to a hundred and fourteen additional incidents over the prior year. Part one crimes are a component of the uniform crime reporting. These are categories of crime we report on a monthly basis to the Department of Justice. This is an antiquated system of crime measurement that began in nineteen thirty as a way to try and capture crime trends occurring throughout the nation. And this will be the last year we present crime to you in this format. Beginning in the year twenty twenty one, we are reporting, I should say, in twenty twenty-two, we are reporting, capturing twenty twenty-one. A new model referred to as the National Incident Based Reporting System or N I B S. It is completely different than U C R. And until we have established, uh, year-over-year reporting in N I B S. We aren't going to have the ability to do year-over-year comparisons as they will not match up to the U C R reporting. In twenty twenty, we had a hundred and fourteen incidents of violent crime in total. Now, violent crime categories include homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Our increase over twenty nineteen was primarily due to an increase in aggravated assaults. And as you can see, the vast majority of these are incidents of domestic violence. Which with the exception of very few limited cases, are impossible for the police to predict or prevent. Majority of our aggravated assaults were perpetrated against people who do not live in El Segundo. With the pandemic emptying our hotels and driving down room costs, we saw many incidents of large groups renting rooms and holding parties in an attempt to avoid COVID restrictions. And it's at these parties where many of these assaults occurred. Within the category of property crimes, we had two subcategories that saw significant increases. First was larceny or theft that is commonly referred to. And the primary driver of this increase was the theft of catalytic converters. Catalytic converters are emission control devices located underneath automobiles. Within them are precious metals such as palladium and platinum. Now, currently, the value of palladium is more than gold. A thief can use a battery operated sawzall and cut a catalytic converter from your vehicle in under one minute. The average price they are receiving from scrap yards right now is one hundred to two hundred dollars per unit. And you can do the math and see what the hourly wage works out to be for thieves that are engaging in this endeavor. And the typical vehicles targeted for this theft are trucks and SUVs because they have a higher ground clearance, which creates an ease of access. We have, however, seen plenty of surveillance videos of thieves using floor jacks to also go after cars now. And a practiced thief will not be hindered at all by using this floor jack. Compounding this problem is the lack of any specific identifying features on a catalytic converter, which makes proving it as stolen after the fact very difficult. And we actually had one instance where we stopped a car. That had several cut converters in it, and one of them, we actually matched exactly to the saw marks of a recently reported crime. And even with that, the district attorney declined to file charges. Now, to help combat this, we've done several community outreach efforts explaining this issue and offering crime prevention tips such as parking in a garage or well at area. We've also offered a program known as Etching Catch, where our residents have come to our city yard and staff is using etching tool to engrave their license plate number. On their catalytic converter, which we hope then will help with identification or at least proving. on their catalytic converter, which we hope then will help with identification or at least proving stolen property after the fact and helping with prosecution. Due to COVID, we could only have one of these events in twenty twenty. We do have one scheduled this March, and within days of us opening up registration, we had over one hundred people sign up and fill in all available spots. Our goal is to continue doing more of these as our COVID restrictions are lifted. There are more enhanced measures that can be taken to protect the catalytic converter, uh, such as cages that can be mounted around them, but they are very cost prohibitive. Manufacturers are working on trying to come up with different metals that aren't as valuable to put in the catalytic converters, but thus far they have been unsuccessful. Unfortunately, the absolute ease of this theft has emboldened criminals to shed the veil of darkness when they would be more obvious to our patrol officers. And increasingly, they are committing their crimes during the day when far more people are out and making their detection far more difficult. This year, we have also seen a significant increase in auto thefts. Like catalytic converters, this is a county-wide trend that is not limited to El Segundo. Also, like catalytic converters, we believe the stay-at-home orders during the pandemic have greatly contributed to creating an environment conducive for this crime. We've studied the locations and neighborhoods where our stolen vehicles are being recovered to see if any pattern developed to help us increase our understanding, and there has been none. We have a detective assigned to the L A County Auto Theft Task Force, and they have not been able to determine correlation or causation other than what I have previously mentioned. We do know from apprehending criminals in stolen cars that they are often engaged in other criminal activities such as stealing catalytic converters, committing burglaries, mail theft, et cetera. And it is likely they are stealing these cars to help support their other criminal activities. Our A L P R camera system, which I'll talk about shortly, has been very impactful in apprehending these criminals coming into our city in stolen vehicles. Now, I've included a slide on residential burglaries, not because there is a significant increase, but rather I believe this is important for our community to understand. Because the thought of somebody breaking into your house is scary, and when you just see the title residential burglary, I believe that's what that connotates. However, it's not, and due to the way we have to report our crimes with you with um, our Part One crimes through U C R, uh, actually, many things get classified as residential burglaries, and actually, out of our sixty-nine total cases, only five were actual entries into residential structures, and of these five, only one house was occupied at the time. Now, this is one area where we, as a community, can do more in our crime prevention efforts, and we will certainly focus on this education piece moving forward in twenty twenty-one. Because many of these crimes occur in carports or in garage with garage doors were left open overnight. Our automated license plate reader camera system continues to be a very effective tool in apprehending criminals coming into our community. In twenty twenty, we had nearly twelve thousand hits for various reasons, such as stolen license plates, stolen vehicles, wanted persons, et cetera. Out of these hits, we were able to make forty-seven arrests. The vast majority of these were stolen vehicles, however, in many of these cases, the suspects had committed other crimes in El Segundo or had tools suggesting they were here to commit a crime. In addition to tracking crime, there are about thirty key performance indicators we track on a monthly basis. And I'm going to touch on a few of these now, and the first is our response time to emergency calls for service and priority calls for service. Our response times in twenty twenty were on average twenty-three seconds faster as compared to twenty nineteen. I think it's also important to note that in twenty twenty, our police officers responded over a minute faster when compared to an average of all the agencies who belong to the regional communication center. Now, this slide breaks down the types of calls and the number of calls as compared to twenty nineteen, and you'll see that the overall, our total calls increased by one percent. And I'd like to draw your attention to the first category of security checks. And what a security check is, is when an officer puts themselves out at either your house or your business, et cetera, in a proactive manner to try and deter crime. And you'll see that compared to twenty nineteen, we had over five thousand additional security checks or what equated to a sixty-eight percent increase. The next two slides, I'm going to go over capture our efforts to survey the community about policing issues. This first one is Spider Tech, which is our transactional survey system. This system surveys people who have had a police report taken. They're asked to rate the level of service they received and are given a free text box to provide relevant comments. Now, this was up and running for about seventy percent of the year, but we're very excited to see that of our eight hundred messages sent, we have a thirty percent completion rate. Elucid is a proactive survey that we do, it's through social media and websites people visit on their smartphone. Survey participants are asked questions correlated to their feelings of safety and their trust in the police. Additionally, they are asked to prioritize policing issues in the community and are given a free-form text box to provide any feedback or concerns that they have. And this graph is going to be an example of a report we receive on a quarterly basis, and it is also compiled into a year in summary. It's interesting to see how traffic was a primary concern at the beginning of the year, and as we progressed through the pandemic and the increase in criminal activity, traffic became less of a concern as compared to thefts and burglaries. Now, what is uh, key about Elucid is it uses census data to try and obtain survey samples that are truly representative of all aspects of our community. And we have the ability to go through their website and even drill down on these surveys um, based on gender, race, et cetera, and see how that equates to people's feelings of trust and security. And twenty twenty, we had one thousand four hundred and fourteen survey responses. Hiring has been one of the biggest challenges since I've been chief of police. I hope Dr. Brand is watching this presentation, because this is always something he would question me on. Uh, we've known about our huge wave of pending retirements, and that has now come to fruition. And while we ultimately ended up with five new police officers last year, we had six leave the organization for various reasons, so we had a net loss of one to our sworn strength over this time last year. Of these new hires, three were lateral police officers, and as you'll remember, we previously contracted with the Ignited Marketing Firm to help us attract lateral police officers. And we very much saw the fruits of this effort. Unfortunately, we had to end this program and the lateral hiring bonus for budgetary reasons, and as a result, we are no longer getting lateral police officers applying with us. I expect we will have a greater net loss of personnel to report to you at the end of twenty twenty-one, because we are still in that wave of retirements on the police. I rightfully expect this body and our community would like a deliverable from this presentation to be some explanation of causation for the increase in crime. I've already discussed this at some length regarding the increases in catalytic converters and auto thefts, beyond this, I believe the single biggest factor is nobody is going to jail. Getting in March, arrestees were no longer housed and were released as soon as they were booked or they were given citations in the field. Crimes were committed with impunity. In one extreme example, we arrested a person in a stolen car after an A L P R hit. This person had been arrested four prior times for auto theft during a one-month period of time and never went to jail. With our arrest, we were finally able to obtain a fifty thousand dollar bail. And we have many more examples of criminals committing multiple crimes and only receiving the ticket. In addition to no jail bookings, there are very few criminal cases moving forward in the courts, which is in creating an environment where there are no consequences for criminal activity. Following the implementation of Prop forty-seven, which decriminalized many crimes in twenty fourteen, the city of El Segundo saw a thirty-one percent increase in crime over a two-year period. And while the academics may disagree on causation, it is my professional opinion, there's a correlation between not putting people in jail and crime. And what we experience is not unique to El Segundo, and it's something that other South Bay cities in the entire county of Los Angeles experienced. And I will say on a more positive note, we're actually very fortunate, we did not experience the explosiveness of gun violence that befell many of our other local communities. And also unfortunately, in my opinion, we have an elected district attorney in Los Angeles who's moving forward on directives that will make Prop forty-seven changes with miniscule in comparison. We are in the midst of one of the largest criminal justice social experiments in the history of law enforcement, and I am not optimistic on this outcome. Despite all of this, we will be relentless in our pursuit of those who wish to come to our community and victimize our residents. We will continue our robust crime prevention efforts on social media, and we have reinstituted the Neighborhood Watch Program, which is currently in virtual format due to COVID restrictions, but we are anxious to get that going again in a uh, in-person format, because we know there's members of our community who who really enjoyed that and who aren't uh, as efficient on the internet. We will continue to conduct our directed enforcement efforts, we will leverage our crime analysts, and as a team, we meet weekly, discuss crime trends in a comp stat type format. Now, if you look to the lower right corner of the slide, you'll see two pictures of police cars, cars, excuse me. This is a program we initiated about a month ago uh, to park cars in areas in the city where we have crime hotspots. The cars are not occupied, so we aren't taking police officers off the streets. These are spare cars that we have in our back lot that we, at night, at the beginning of a shift, will take out and move around. We leave them parked with the lights on, and we move them throughout the evening or the day. And so far, we are seeing very positive results, and in some cases, we are seeing sixty to seventy percent month-to-month reductions in crime. This is, we began this as a pilot program with only a few cars at night, however, like the COVID vaccine, the earlier, the early results are so promising that we will significantly and immediately ramp up this effort. Now, we have received some complaints, uh, probably the the biggest complaint is people call because a a car's been on their street for for a few hours and the lights are shining in their windows, and I just want the community to know that we will certainly move our our car or or do something so that it doesn't impact you, that that is not our goal, we just we just want criminals to to be on their toes when they come into our city, and I don't want them to know if they come in, is that a policeman in that car, is there a police officer uh, nearby, or is that a uh, is that a decoy car that we have put out, and we're looking for that synergistic effect to help impact crime? So I struggled a little bit with this slide. It means many things to many people. But what I think this is, it's symbolic of the massive changes we have experienced as a law enforcement profession over the last year. We were confronted with many challenges, to be sure, but with challenge comes opportunity. And counsel, I want to thank you for your leadership during these unprecedented times and for your foresight in establishing the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I've met with them several times. And I'm looking forward to collaborating on how to provide the highest level of our of service to our community in the years to come. And I want to conclude this presentation with a thank you to all of the men and women of the El Segundo Police Department. At a time when people were directed to stay home to avoid becoming sick, your police employees came to work. And as you can see by the number of calls they handled, they did not shy away from doing their duty. Even during the early days of the pandemic, when we did not understand the virus, its capability of spreading or how dangerous it really was, your police officers and professional staff did service above self twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. After that, I'm very grateful. Counsel and mayor, this concludes my presentation, and my my team and I are in the room here and available to answer questions. I think I need to uh, figure out how to stop sharing my screen, so there we go.
Great presentation, chief. I'm going to look to my colleagues for questions. Not seeing any currently. Mayor Pro Tem, you coming off mute? Yep, and then Councilman Nickel.
Chief Whalen, what are our options for filing charges on individuals? Uh, do we, are we constrained, is there, let me back up. I believe some of our neighboring communities have district attorneys or ADAs who are uh, in direct support of those specific communities, and I know uh, without trying to read the tea leaves on some of the drama between the elected district attorney and the union of ADAs underneath him. Is there any other alternative avenues by which we could look to have charges filed and conceivably, as jails reopen, at least see bookings require some form of internment, whether it's in our own jail or Hawthorne's or whomever?
Well, thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. I think if you're talking about, and I, and I, if if uh, our city attorney has has a a different opinion on that, please jump on. In some communities, the city attorney will prosecute uh, misdemeanor charges. Uh, not all, but some. Uh, we don't have it set up that way. We uh, go to Los Angeles court to file our misdemeanor cases. That's the way we've always done it since I've been here. I I don't know that I understand the legal underpinnings of why that's the case. Um, but the the deputy district attorneys right now are under some directives that you've probably seen about in the newspapers. There there are very few misdemeanor cases to be filed, there are no sentencing enhancements that would be filed, juvenile not to be tried as adults. Um, so those will be definitely some challenges moving forward. Um, I can definitely talk to the city attorney to see if there's ways that we can explore um, things around that now. As far as housing people, um, we are limited in how much time we can house at Hawthorne Hawthorne Jail until we arraign somebody. And once we go to arraignment, that then is controlled by the courts, and and we lose control over that, so we can't go beyond a few days in jail uh, before we have to go through the arraignment process and then actually get them remanded over to L A County Jail, and that that is where the impediment will come from, because that's where uh, we're seeing the roadblocks right now.
Mayor and counsel, if I just briefly can um, elaborate a little bit on what the chief is referring to, is right now, the city attorney's office limits the filing of criminal matters to those um, misdemeanor violations which are violations arising from the El Segundo Municipal Code. We do potentially have the authority to file misdemeanors based upon state laws. Um, for example, disturbing the peace and 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 other types of misdemeanors that in the past have been pursued by the district attorney's office. There's a cost savings, um, a real cost savings when the district attorney actually moves forward and files those, because there's not a, you you're not in paying the city attorney's office to handle those kind of cases. So there is the option, and and I can explore this with Chief Whalen and 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 come back with the council, where there's a there is a portion of what the district attorney's office does or did, as it appears, they're no longer doing it, that we could um, take on those kind of cases, but there will be a cost associated with that, and we can we can explore that and try to estimate what that would be, and you know, just, this is a relatively new um, this issue that we're facing, and it it worked out quite well for the city in the past to have the district attorney's office handle these, because it was a tremendous cost savings over having um, my office handle them, but we can, we can certainly look at that and come back to the council to report as to how that would work if my office were to take over those those types of cases which we could handle, which are state law violations. But that won't. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sorry. No, please.
But that won't, um, as far as felonies, we don't have that authority. Um, but we will, we will, we can come back with um, more information on that point.
But it is conceivable where where the city of El Segundo may have more interest in a misdemeanor than the county of Los Angeles has in a felony with regard to some of the people that we are encountering.
That's correct. Um, and it's not just misdemeanors that the um, L A um, district attorney is not handling, there are also felonies that they're not, they're not pursuing, so it's it goes beyond misdemeanors, but there's at least a a slice of what they're now not doing that potentially we could pick up.
Chief Whalen, is this is a bit of of a a Monday, well, not even Monday, Monday quarterback, you may Monday, Monday philosophizing, but do we, when we run or encounter an individual and run their their um, identification, if a warrant comes up and it's from a separate county, Ventura County, Orange County, for instance, do we have the capability to alert on their behalf? Because I know there is an effort uh, by district's attorney in neighboring counties to move things to their jurisdiction, uh, because they'll be more aggressive prosecuting. Is that an option available to us if we see someone who is come from a neighboring county and has an outstanding warrant?
Yes, sir, that is, and what would happen i- if we did run somebody and they had an out-of-county warrant, that county would be contacted and asked if they wanted us to arrest, and they would come over and pick that person up from us, so it would be really, um, it would be within our purview to ask them if they want the person, and then it would be up to whatever their protocols are to decide whether or not they wanted to come over and pick up that person. And a lot of times, that's based on what the bail amount is and what the underlying thing in the charge.
Is there anything that we take into consideration that is a limiting factor, whether it's transporting, are they required to come to us? Or or are we able to transport to them if they ask for someone to be uh, charged in a neighboring county?
Well, the way we do it now is they come to us, whether or not we change that on a go-forward basis, um, I I suppose that's a possibility, but it it would be that that isn't how it's currently done, so you know, it's kind of reciprocity, if somebody picks up an El Segundo warrant, they would call us and ask if we want that person, and we would go through the same thing, and as of right now, I mean, odds are, we would ask them to cite them out, because that's all we would do here. And that's typically what's been occurring with our warrants that we're picking up here that are out of county. Um, and some of that's COVID, I mean, you know, I kind of like, there there is a, there's a COVID and a political world that are somewhat aligned right now. Um, and and with COVID, irrespective of the DA's philosophy, they were not putting people in jail. And I just read uh, an article today that at least in the state prisons, um, almost half of the prisoners have now gotten the COVID vaccine. So perhaps as we see that become more prevalent, people start going back in jail, then that may be an option.
Thank you. I think that 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 if there is a time where we need to make funds available to transport people for out-of-county warrants, I I I don't suspect if that could be done in a COVID-safe manner that you would run into much resistance.
Thank you. Councilman Nickel.
Uh, to piggyback on uh, Mayor Pro Tem's question, do we file our charges with L A court, or do we file, because I know there's a Torrance Courthouse, what do we typically do?
With L A court, we do not use the Torrance Courthouse.
And is that um, is that something that's set up with law, is that a choice, is there a cost involved, is it, wh- what is the reasoning there?
It's the jurisdiction.
The jurisdiction, and and what would it take to um, change that jurisdiction? Is that just where it's kind of like we're in L A County, so that's just where we go, or?
It it has to do, yes, we're we're all in the L A County, so we're under the auspices of the. It has to do, yes. We're all in the LA County, so we're under the auspices of the Los Angeles District Attorney, and it's based on where we are located within the county. As to why we go where we go. I don't know the answer to whether we could voluntarily go to Torrance. I don't actually know that there would be a benefit to doing that. It's certainly something I could, I don't know if anybody, see, my team's all in the room here. I don't know if any one of them has the answer to that question and wants to jump on. Let me see, I gotta. Yeah, I'm getting texts saying it's the same. So there would be no tangible benefits to us to try and locate to a different courthouse.
Okay, two other questions. One, I just wanted to thank you for chiseling out that residential burglary piece. I think that's important because I think many of our residents sort of jumped to that same conclusion. So thank you for that. I think that's a very visual representation of what I know you and I have talked about in the past, which is you know, how can we measure, do you feel safe? You know, do the residents in El Segundo feel safe? And if they feel safe, I feel that you and your staff are doing their job. Other question is, if you can explain to the viewing public and to us, you arrest somebody who clearly is stealing catalytic converters, right? You know, one of your officers pulls them over, they have the weapons, we see it on the police log. What happens? They're, I mean, they're taken off the street, they're taken to Hawthorne Jail, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're at least taken out of circulation for causing crime that night?
Yes, absolutely. So what I've instructed my staff is, we are the law enforcement arm of the criminal justice system, and we arrest people for violating the law. It is not, we don't use whether or not the district attorney is going to file as a guidance for what we believe to be appropriate action in the field. So our officer stops a car at night for whatever reason, they conduct an investigation, they find the catalytic converters. It depends on sort of the totality as to what we might charge them with. Typically, it's going to be suspicion of grand theft, depending on the tools that they have with them and so forth. We would arrest them for that and they would be booked in Hawthorne Jail. Our bookings at the end of last year went up exponentially. So we are booking, everybody we stop and everybody we arrest for that, we are booking them and if possible and appropriate, we're towing their vehicle.
Thank you. I think I'm speaking for myself here, but I think the residents of El Segundo appreciate that sentiment and that action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Counsel, okay, thank you. Councilor Prustock.
Yeah, so Chief, would it be, would it benefit for us, would it be a benefit if we were to vocalize our concern using data about some of these new, some of these new laws that the the district attorney is putting in there, putting in that are, that are causing the crimes to increase to the county supervisors? Like, is there any? If we collaborated with other cities and produced some documentation with data, could that be of use to you and the police force in ensuring that some of these laws get, some of these changes are changed back?
Yes, ma'am. I think as we move forward, that would be very important. I think while I'm giving you my opinion on correlation right now. He's only been district attorney since December, so his policies and directives have not had the opportunity to pan themselves out. And so we could be seeing COVID, we could be seeing his policies. But knowing what we went through after Prop forty-seven, knowing what we went through when we didn't put people in jail during COVID, I believe this is what the outcome is going to be. And I think it's going to be very important for us to track all the metrics related to it, case filings. And part of case filings too, is why are we getting rejections from the district attorney's office? And we're already starting to track that. Are we getting rejections because we didn't do a good enough case? Are we getting rejections because we need to have more follow-up? Or are we getting rejections because it's just rejected on its face? That's a great case, El Segundo PD. Yeah, they committed the crime, but just on the face, we are not moving forward with those. And I think as we start to build that database, I think that local governments would, it would be definitely in everyone's best interest to, if it does pan out. Now, so the flip side to this is there are people who would say that this is actually what we need to be doing, that this is the way forward, this is the way to prevent recidivism, all of those sorts of things. And so we would have to have enough of a data set, I believe, to either support that argument or counter that argument. But I absolutely believe local governments are going to need to be involved because as I said, it's my professional opinion. People are going to continue to want to come in and victimize our community. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to do whatever we can to stop that.
Okay, so we should be prepared to write something, you know, so you'll give us direction when you need that documentation.
Yes, ma'am, I will. We're watching this closely, both at the individual level at El Segundo, within our team. I meet regularly with the South Bay Chiefs where we're talking about this, and we meet weekly with all of the LA County Chiefs. We have an executive board with the LA County Chiefs and in fact, met with Mr. Gascoigne this week to talk about some of the concerns that we have. Not only with his directives, but with the lack of communication coming from his office, the lack of collaboration with the LA County Chiefs. So these will be all things that we're tracking and certainly I will be keeping this body apprised of what we learn moving forward on a fairly frequent basis.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other comments. Well done, Chief. Thank you.
Chief, can I ask one more? I'm just going to put you on the spot briefly in that by any examination of the budget, we don't shy away from resourcing, supplying or supporting your department. Are there things, we all see the blotter every day. So we could see fourteen hundred block of east. Now, we see first, second, three hundred block north. We see where these things occur. Or are there things that if you were drawing up a crime suppression map, whether it's a street blockade or a checkpoint or whichever, are there things that you have in the an extremist plan that you would like to see done? This may not be the venue for it, but I would urge you that if you have things that you would like to see done, infrastructure-wise, that you do not be bashful and raise that to the city manager, because I think that you can sense palpably the frustration that the residents have in every regard with the situation they feel is outside of all of our control and are looking for ways to mitigate the concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time and your efforts protecting our city. All right, next up, we have, let's see, well, actually, I'm sorry, we need to have consensus to receive and file. I can't imagine anyone's opposed. Yeah, we're good. Okay. Next up, we have the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 state budget overview. And I see Mrs. Guzman Hurtado on the line. Mr. Mitnick, is she going to present? Would you like to start?
Yes, this is at the request of council from when we had our last budget discussion to give a brief update on the state, the proposed state budget and impact on El Segundo. Our finance director and our public information officer, legislative affairs analyst will give you a very brief report. Thank you.
Martha, we can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear me now?
We did, yes. No. We might have to have Joe do it. Joe, can you do it? Oh, wait a minute. She can come in here. Yeah, let's have her come in here and do it.
All right, my apologies. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. I'm going to try to get through this briefly. I know it's been a long night for everyone, so just want to let you know that we're going to go through this budget presentation. We're going to provide you an overview and then we're going to take a a look at the early action budget that Governor Newsom signed into law last week, followed by a closer look at the state's multi-year forecast and closing with an overview of the proposed one point nine trillion COVID nineteen relief bill currently being debated in Congress. Okay, so the good news overall is the state budget doesn't have, include any takeaways or cuts to city funding. So that is good news in a nutshell. To kick off the 2021 legislative session, Governor Gavin Newsom unveiled a record-breaking two hundred and twenty-seven point two billion dollar budget proposal for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year with a focus on expediting recovery from the health and economic crisis caused by COVID nineteen. The state budget features the highest investment ever in public schools, ninety billion, four point five billion to accelerate recovery and job creation in the state, and three hundred and seventy-two million to expedite the delivery of COVID nineteen vaccinations. Other areas of focus include funding for healthcare affordability and aging, housing and homelessness, emergency response and preparedness, and climate action change items such as wildfire preparedness. Next budget. Other highlights of the proposed state budget include housing, community, and economic development, environmental quality. And I'm just going to kind of go through these quickly since I know we want to get through this evening. But I just want to put some, point something out under housing, community, and economic development. The governor signed legislation extending the eviction and moratorium through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, protecting millions of individuals struggling to pay their rent due to the pandemic. There is also five hundred, a million one-time general fund for the infill infrastructure grant program that provides grants to local governments and developers just for housing construction. Under transportation, communications, and public works, there's two point four billion for the state transportation improvement program, which provides funding for future multimodal transportation improvements. There's also one billion to address traffic congestion, nine hundred million to provide projects and support, projects that support walking and biking, and eight hundred million for partnerships with local transportation agencies. So, and then additionally, the proposed state budget includes one hundred and sixty-four point five billion general fund budget and projects thirty-four billion in total reserves and surplus. The budget significantly restores the state's rainy day fund and economic support reserves that plummeted due to COVID nineteen. A surplus of fifteen billion largely in one-time funds is available for spending to address COVID nineteen and support climate resilience and recovery. Those are potential funding opportunities for El Segundo. The proposed budget is, if approved, includes several line items listed in the staff report that could be potential buckets of funding for the city to pursue for capital improvement programs, projects, green projects, and broadband infrastructure. There's one point five billion for the infrastructure incentives to implement the state's zero emissions of vehicle goals, three hundred million for deferred maintenance and greening of state infrastructure. There's also three hundred and fifty-three point nine million over the next five years for broadband infrastructure improvements and system-wide technology investments. The proposed budget also includes five hundred and seventy-five million in additional funds for the state's small business COVID nineteen relief grant program, which provides grants of up to twenty-five thousand for small businesses and nonprofit organizations that have been impacted by COVID nineteen with priority given to the regions and industries particularly hit hard. Now, on February twenty-third, the governor signed a seven point six billion dollar coronavirus relief package that includes six hundred dollars in one-time payments to five point seven million people while setting aside more than two billion in grants for struggling small businesses. The package builds on the initiatives of the governor's January state budget proposal to provide cash relief to individuals and families hardest hit by the pandemic, increase aid to small businesses, and provide license fee renewal fee waivers to businesses impacted by the pandemic. The state's relief package also includes support for childcare and college students. Finance Director Joe Lilia will join us now with more on the state budget windfall and a multi-year forecast.
All right, Mayor, City Council members. So I'm going to touch very high-level, thirty thousand-foot view of the one-time budget windfall, which is from excess proceeds. Revenue proceeds from the current year that will be allocated over partially twenty twenty-one and also into twenty-one, twenty-two. So it's fifteen point five billion dollars. There's one, eight point one billion dollars allocated towards one-time spending. And there's a breakdown here, discretionary COVID nineteen response, two and a half billion. Housing and homeless, homelessness, two point three billion. Resources and environment, one point nine billion. Business assistance, mainly small business assistance, point nine billion. Other half a billion. Then of that fifteen and a half billion, two point nine billion is being allocated towards the economic uncertainty reserve, so boosting that reserve. Two point five billion towards revenue reductions. This is really income tax reductions. And this is primarily an increase in the earned income credit. Permanent expenditure increases of one point three billion. And then additional payments towards debt of point seven billion. So that's how that fifteen and a half billion windfall is being allocated. The long-term forecast, which the state does a five-year forecast, will out to twenty twenty-five. You know, unfortunately, the operating deficits are expected to be for the proposed budget for next year, about one billion dollars. And then increasing each year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, about eleven billion, and twenty-four, just slightly over fifteen billion, and then in twenty-five, about seventeen billion dollars in operating deficit. So a lot of those reserves that were built back up, replenished, and maybe even at the highest levels they've ever been, they will probably slowly be depleted over the next several years. Unless there's some type of revenue measures or expenditure control that the state legislator and the governor address. And real quick, this is what the cost drivers are that are creating these operational deficits. Number one is the state's Medicare program. And then schools K through twelve and community colleges is the next largest increase. And then state employee compensation, and that's salaries, benefits, pension costs, and retiree healthcare. So those are the largest cost drivers that are contributing to the state's operating deficits. And I'm going to turn it back over to Martha to touch on federal relief package.
All right, thank you, Joe. Right now, all eyes are at the federal level. The proposed federal relief package includes three hundred and fifty billion for states, municipalities, counties, tribes, and territories. It provides an allocation of sixty-five billion for cities, towns, and villages. Of that, there is nineteen point five billion proposed for cities with a population of fifty thousand or less. Under the proposed bill, the city of El Segundo's allocation for local relief funding is estimated to be three million for reimbursement due to lost revenue due to the pandemic. So that would be good news for the community. The proposed package, next slide please, also includes housing, education, transportation, and FEMA recovery that is critical for communities to stabilize. The House passed the reconciliation package last week with aid for state and local government. And the Senate is expected to vote on it this week as part of the next COVID nineteen relief package. And we'll be monitoring that and provide updates as soon as that information is available, as soon as they have the Senate votes. That includes, concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Great. Do you mind closing the presentation? Whoever's driving, Scott. Wow, well done. I love, first of all, we all loved it. It was ten slides. Very succinct and it moved very swiftly. And also that you told us what you're going to tell us, then you told us, and then you recapped it nicely. So great presentation. Colleagues, any comments? Yeah, Councilor Drew.
Yes, Martha, actually, I just want to comment that I know that's a tremendous amount of information to go through a state budget. And you managed to break it down to what the major bullet points were, and even more importantly, breaking it down to what it means for us as a community. I really think that's the important piece of that because you can get lost in the data in a small town like ours, sometimes gets lost in the shuffle. So thank you for all of you who worked on that. That was really, really good and very informative. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? No, thank you. All right. Let's see. We, I think we have council consensus to receive and file. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. We are moving on. We've got reports. City Clerk Tracy, you're up.
I have none this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Treasurer on anyone from that department? No, okay. Councilor Drew.
Yeah, just one quick thing. I know that tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, that there is a city school affairs subcommittee meeting that I know that Councilmember Nickel and Mayor Boils, that you are part of and attending. And I know there's one discussion item regarding youth sports league. So I just kind of wanted to touch on one thing that's kind of happening right now, not by any fault of anybody in town, but these county health orders are very difficult, especially for the schools. It's basically forcing them to shut down their facilities for anyone that's outside of school. So when it comes to youth sports, obviously, we're talking about the high school sports teams can use those facilities, but nobody from the outside. So when it comes to youth sports, obviously we're talking about the, the high school sports teams can use those facilities, but nobody from the outside can't. The unfortunate circumstance to that is, um, we have youth sports leagues in towns that heavily rely on those fields, Center Street School, Arena Field, Richmond, all of that. Um, and if we are not able, or they are not able to utilize these fields, I honestly don't know how they're going to have a, a league or a season. Now, I understand these things might change, but in the interim, I also understand that, um, with the joint use agreement, there are high school teams that practice on city fields. I get that. That's been great. Um, however, if we're not able to work something out, I just believe as a city, we're going to have to relook at the allocation for this because just between girls softball and little league, you're talking about five hundred families in town. Um, and we just figured, need to figure out a way to carve out an appropriate amount of space, uh, to allow them to do that. So I'm just hoping that, that, that if you can kind of, um, initiate a discussion on that and what kind of options we have. Um, I think it would just be good for, uh, the community overall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Noted. All right. Councilmember Nickel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Drew, we will, uh, definitely bring that up. Um, something to add on that is, uh, I can't even begin to understand the, uh, revenue loss for the schools. You know, so many club teams and other teams that rent those fields from them year round. So we have almost an entire calendar year now without revenue from those sources. So, um, I feel for them. Um, I just wanted to bring up that I think that we are entering into a realm. Uh, every, I feel like every chapter of COVID has been slightly different and has come with its own, uh, forms of judgment one way or another. And here it is, you know, we have people getting vaccinated. Some people are out feeling great. They have full shots. They're like, I don't really want to wear a mask, but I will wear a mask. I don't know. And I think we're heading into this, uh, this period of time where, uh, you're going to have a lot of conflicting opinions on things and how things reopen, how quickly would they reopen? And I will say what I said last summer, please just lead with kindness. Please leave judgment aside, you know, everyone is entitled to their own choice and their own approach to this once in a generation pandemic, hopefully. Uh, so I just know us as a community, we say that El Segundo community is the number one thing. Community is what makes us special. And I would just like to say then every one of us should look in the mirror and say, okay, well, if community is what makes us special, then I want to be part of what makes us special. And I don't want to judge my neighbor. I want to, I want to like my neighbor because they live next to me. You know, I don't care what political affiliation they have. What I enjoy is that we share something and that is that we are from El Segundo. We love this place and we want to see this place thrive. So lead with kindness, uh, and love thy neighbor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. Councilmember Prustock.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to give a shout, give a shout out and send congratulations to ESUSD for being the first school district in the South Bay to bring back the fourth and fifth graders. So as of today, we now have K through five back in our, our schools. And in the next couple of weeks, the sixth graders will be coming back as well as the high school seniors. I know the school district has been working very hard to make that happen. So shout out to them. And, um, actually Senator Ben Allen gave a shout out to El Segundo Unified during our, um, South Bay legislative call just last week. So congratulations to that, to them. Um, I know it was, it's a feat, it was a strong feat, a difficult feat to make happen. And they really persevered to make it happen. Um, but that being said, that means we do have a lot of kids walking to and from school now. So we need to re, um, remind people to drive slow, to drive the speed limit and to stop at every stop sign to ensure that our kids arrive to school safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Prustock. Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
Nothing to report this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'll be brief. Uh, most notable thing at the recent Southern Cal Association of Government Meeting related to C, uh, community economic housing development was that there was some discussion about whether or not to approve the process or to litigate against the Rena process, which mandates that we're going to build some five hundred units over the next nine years. And it was a interesting vote. There are probably a third of the members that voted to litigate, myself included, representing the city. And it did pass though to not litigate and go forward, accepting the methodology with an emphasis on working with the, help me here, Scott, is it the HCD? Yeah, I know you know Chris, yeah, HCD to basically reform that process and improve it for the next cycle, which will be starting ten years from now. Uh, but just to get started on that now. Also quickly on the beach, I'm, I'm on the, uh, Beach Commission, Department of Beaches and Harbors. And I could tell you that the head lifeguard was on there for LA County talking about what they're doing to prepare for opening junior lifeguards. Doesn't mean it's a guarantee. They still have to go back before the Board of Supervisors, but they're working on it. So that's good news too. That is all I have this evening. I'll turn it over to the city attorney, followed by the city manager.
Uh, I have nothing, Zee. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Mark. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, no additional follow-up. The, the next regular council meeting will be on March sixteenth. It looks like we're going to have a special closed session on, uh, March eighth. And as we learn more about the items, we'll make council aware. So that's it for city manager comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All have a great need, uh, evening. We are adjourned. Nine fourteen.